Okay, good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Woodbury County Zoning Commission. Today's date is November 24th and the time is 5 o'clock PM. Tonight's meeting will be audiotaped and minutes will be prepared. In respect to all parties, we ask those present to turn off cell phones or set to vibrate. Those in attendance are asked to legibly complete the attendance sheet upon the front table. I would like to take a moment to review the procedures that the commission will follow tonight. First, the commission will handle the normal housekeeping agenda items. Then for each application on the agenda, I will open the public hearing on the item. The planning and zoning staff will then present the staff report, including the staff recommendation. Any letters or other communication received from the public prior to the hearing will be entered into the record. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present his or her case and respond to the staff report. Next, we will hear comments from the public. If you would like to speak either in support of or against the application, you must come to the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. All interested parties shall be heard, but repetitious comments should be avoided. Repetitious or irrelevant comments may be ruled out of order by the chair. I ask that you remain respectful and courteous with your comments at all times. We will limit those comments to three minutes, please. After all public comments have been heard, the staff and applicant may make a closing statement. The hearing shall then be closed by motion and vote. Thereafter, no further comments from the staff, public, or applicant may be heard unless asked for by the commission. The commission shall then deliberate the case and may ask questions of the applicant, the staff, or any party offering testimony. However, such questions do not reopen the hearing for additional comments from the public unless so requested or approved by the commission. The commission will then formulate and vote on a motion. The motion will typically either grant or deny the requested application. Any commission member who has ex parte communication to place on the record of this meeting should do so prior to the beginning of the deliberation of the respective agenda item. That being said, the next item on the agenda is roll call. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. Next item on the agenda is public comment on matters not on the agenda. Seeing or hearing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If there are no addition.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from September 22nd.
I'll second.
Aye.
I need to turn on my microphone. Is the public hearing consideration of proposed Brozamlee addition minor subdivision? Dan, do you want to read that information into the record, please?
Yes. The Brozamlee Farms LLC has submitted an application for a two lot minor subdivision. The proposed subdivision named Brozamlee addition seeks to divide 150.57 acres from four government lots into two lots. Lot one consisting of 126.23 total acres and lot two consisting of 24.34 total acres. The subject properties identified as the parcels as reflected in the packet ending in '02, '04, '05, and '06 are located in Section 1 Township 88 North, Range 45 West of the Mowville Township within government lots 5, 6, 7, and 8. The properties are located within the agricultural preservation zoning district. The property is located about two miles southeast of Mowville, south 160th Street, and west of Ida Avenue. The minor subdivision proposal has been noticed in the Sioux City Journal's legal section, November 13, 2025. The neighbors within 1,000 feet have been duly notified via the November 10th letter about this evening's public hearing before the zoning commission. Appropriate stakeholders, including government agencies, utilities, organizations, have been notified and have been requested to comment. The Woodbury County engineer found the proposal in compliance with Iowa code closure requirements and indicated that the property owners should coordinate with the engineer's office for future access or modifications to existing access, which require permitting. The property, as noted, is in the agricultural preservation district. It's not in a floodplain. The city of Mowville elected to waive their subdivision plat review with the passage of Council Resolution 2025 hyphen 14. Based on the information provided, the proposal does meet the basic criteria for approval. After the printing of the packet, it's important to note, David Brozamlee out at 1625 Ida Avenue contacted the office verbally and stated that he has no, he is the neighbor right there next door to the proposed addition and does not have problems with that, so.
Thank you. Do we have someone here that represents Brozamlee's? Do you have anything you want to add to the information that we have in the packet? Do we need, we should probably have you come up here and state your name and address? And just reiterate what you just said, please.
I mean, it's all kind of straight up and stuff and that. It's, I'm just trying to buy that strip of pasture ground. It's been pasture ground since my parents owned this place in the early 70s. And I've been raising cattle on it and stuff and that and paying rent on it. I own a fifth of it already and I'm just trying to buy the rest of it from the LLC so I can keep doing it and my son and my grandson can keep doing it. I mean, there's no housing development, contrary to what everybody thinks. And there'd be no other, no other laneways to it. It's already got access from the road to it and stuff and that, so it's just what it is. And I want to thank Dan for all his answers and stuff and my questions, my calls and stuff and that. A lot of help. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Do we have anyone else in the public that wants to speak to this application? Not seeing anybody. Okay, do our commissioners have any questions?
Do we need to accept this comment into the record?
Um, I read it into the minute, so I think we're fine.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Report.
Hey, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion if you're ready to do that while we got to close the public hearing, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, got to close the public hearing first.
And make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay, now we'll entertain a motion. Reflecting the application.
I'd make a motion to recommend to the county board of supervisors approval of the plat as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Have any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay. This moves forward. Dan, do you want to explain that process moving forward? Does he have papers to sign and?
Yeah, the next step, subdivision plats are brought to the board of supervisors for an agenda item. So I'll be reaching out to the applicant and we'll discuss the steps further, but it will go before the board of supervisors for final approval. The subdivision plat that's submitted will need to be signed off on the appropriate county departments and other stakeholders. And, um, and then after the supervisors look at it, if it's approved at the supervisor level, then it would be a recorded document within the recorder's office and we can discuss that further.
Thank you. Okay, we have another item on the agenda. Public hearing, consideration of proposed 252nd Overlook Minor Subdivision, five lots. Application on parcel number, Dan, do you want to take over from here?
Yes. Switch this. Okay, these next two agenda items are associated with each other. One is the subdivision plat itself for the establishment of lots. And the other item to follow this is the rezone from AP to AE. They both work hand in hand as far as the discussion, but we do have separate agenda items on them. So I will proceed with explaining that this is from an application from Doug Skinner, Skinner Holdings LLC has submitted an application for a minor subdivision and an application for a zoning ordinance map amendment, rezoned to the agriculture, from agricultural preservation to the agricultural estates zoning district. The proposed subdivision named 252nd Overlook is for a 36.50 acre portion of this property located in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter of southwest quarter and northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 24 Township 87 North, Range 46 West in Woodbury County. The property is located on the GAS parcel, as noted in the packet, ending in 11. The property is situated at 2374 252nd Street, Hornick, Iowa. It's approximately seven miles east of Salix and seven miles south of Hornick, east of Old Highway 141, west of Franklin Avenue, and on the south side of 252nd Street. Additionally, Skinner Holdings, as referenced, has applied for the zoning map amendment to rezon the aforementioned property from agricultural preservation to the agricultural zoning district. This rezone is to accommodate the future development of lots, which is required under Section 3.01, that 1B of the Woodbury County Zoning Ordinance. These proposals have been noticed in Sioux City Journal's legal section. It would be November 13, 2025, I should say. The neighbors within 1,000 feet have been duly notified via November 10th letter about this evening's meeting before the zoning commission, public hearing on November 24th. Appropriate stakeholders, including government agencies, utilities, and organizations, have been notified and been requested to comment. The Woodbury County engineer found the proposal in compliance with Iowa code closure requirements and indicated the property owner should coordinate with the engineer's office for future access or modifications to existing access, which would require permitting. The, as referenced, the property right now is in the agricultural preservation zoning district, is not in the floodplain. Contingent on information received and reviewed through the public hearing process. From the staff point, both proposals can meet the basic requirements for approval. But with that said, as this is a public hearing, we're here to learn quite a bit about the project. And as of the printing of this packet, I would like to inform the commission and the public that more information has been received and we will ask that various items associated with this be received into the record. And I'll get to that momentarily. I do want to mention that county engineer Laura Severs did submit the memo, the traditional memo that the county engineer provides as part of the staff level review. One thing to add there is she had a reference to 757.63 feet on the plat. That should be revised to 754.64. So depending on what conclusions come out of tonight, I would ask that the commission adopt this directive or requirement that this number be associated with the plat at a time as well. So if you technically receive that or consider putting that directive in there, we just got to remember that at some point through the meeting. So right now might be a good time just to include that as part of the record.
Okay, we need a motion to include that memo?
It should.
Into the record stating this.
That that should be associated with any final plat that's recommended.
Associated with any final plat. Need a motion.
I'd make the motion to adopt that that's associated with any final plot, the letter received from the county engineer.
And the 754.
757.64 instead of .63, yes.
Okay, I've got a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign.
Okay, to continue on, I am going to ask that public comments be received into the record during my time here to present. As of nine o'clock this morning, we had received direct communication with staff. And I will point out for the good of the public, we see the comment from Reverend James Thomas Jr., November 20th, 2025, around 5:25 PM. Mr. Thomas, pastor living across the valley, stated he opposes the rezoning process from AP to AE, arguing it would block public scenic views of Woodbury County and Los Hills, privatizing for new lot owners, altering the rural character into subdivision-like development. He urges denial to preserve the area's appeal despite potential tax benefits and plans to attend, he attends, plans to attend the meeting for more points. Another item that was received was a citizen petition circulated by Gary McMullen, November 21st, 2025, nine o'clock AM. We received a petition, had 35 to 40 signatures or more from nearby residents opposing the 252nd Overlook five lot subdivision and AP to AE rezone for the parcel ending in '01, citing inadequate gravel roads for increased traffic, reduced Los Hills enjoyment for locals, byway travelers, potential tax hikes from rising property values, strain on county services, and risk to fragile soil. Include, they included a property map emphasizing the preserving the area's value. November 21st, Richard Pope submitted 11:43 AM statement personally opposing subdividing the Skinner property due to the Los Hills soil, low CSR, steep slopes prone to erosion. They referenced the recent events in Sioux City, included that are in suitable for development and part of Iowa's largest prairie remnant. He recommends denying the zoning change to limit building in the steep western bluffs and preserve non-crop values over realtor assessments. Seth Brooks, on behalf of Los Hills National Scenic Byway, Golden Hills RCND, November 21st, 3:57 PM, representing the byway urges evaluation of AP to AE rezone on the parcel for impacts on Luton Special Landscape Area Ecology and Bylaw. Byways view shed along 141 or surveys value undevelopment. Ridge lines, vistas, and prairies stresses responsible decisions to maintain scenic qualities for residents, visitors, and government. And Gary and Darlin McMullen, November 21st, 7:54 PM, stated he lives directly across from the proposed five lot subdivision, strongly opposes it and the rezone, arguing the unique little Egypt Los Hills landscape should be preserved for public enjoyment as it's visible from the scenic byway. They warn the steep, poorly maintained gravel road will deteriorate more with more traffic and resent the, okay. And he had, he had sent the email again, basically attempted previously. So I would ask that these names all be considered for receipt into the official record of the zoning commission, which includes them as part of the minutes and associates them with the review as well as for the supervisor proceedings as well.
Okay, so we need a motion to receive the documents that have the names, the petition, and letters and emails related to this application.
Motion to receive all of the documents that Dan read to us.
Okay, we have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay.
Okay, and I will remind everyone that we are on the subdivision plat, of course, for this respective item as well. So we are in the public hearing at this point in time. And so it'd be important to hear directly from the applicant and of course, from the public. And we'll have the opportunity to do that again under the next item. So you'll open up a public hearing. You'll have a role of understanding the direction of how you want to handle the plat. And then we would move into, of course, the rezone.
Okay. The first thing is the public hearing. Do we have someone here for the Skinner's representation? Let's start there.
Can I get some clarification? I heard something about three minutes.
Trying to, yeah, with an.
Trying, trying. We will. We have a lot of people, I don't think they're going to get done in three minutes, so.
Well.
I just asked for.
We're trying to be consistent.
Okay, then if that's the case, that's the case. So my name's Doug Skinner. I have Brenten Feigtenberger with me. Does he get three minutes or is it just total?
Between three minutes.
I will clarify, the applicant is not barred to the three minutes as far as the presentation of, and, and there might be questions that.
Okay.
Come from the board.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. Yeah, so my name's Doug Skinner, I am the owner of the property. I own Skinner Holdings, who owns the property. And I'm working with Brenton Feigtenberger to do this potential small development. So I wanted to, you know, come here today and kind of present, I think, what's probably been a lot of misinformation. I don't want to present misinformation, I want to tap down misinformation. So to start, I think it's important that, you know, when I read the petition, I see eight reasons for this petition. And, you know, some of these really need to bear out. You know, just the first one, people five miles away, right? Now, everybody's entitled to their opinion about the use of the Los Hills and the beauty and all that. And I completely understand that. But five miles away, there's really not a financial impact. I don't think there's really not. I mean, we have to, there's a couple of people that are within the 1,000 feet. In fact, if you look at where the houses would be built, there's one home that would be 1,000 feet from any of the potential building sites, and that's the McMullens. There is no other home within 1,000 feet of where any of the, of the building sites. Okay, so that's one issue. Second issue, the 252nd Street, right, is a steep windy road, that's a true statement. But to say that three homes, three families, is going to materially impact that road? That's like saying, if I sold my property to a family of six and they had three teenagers, well, that's gonna, I can't do that. You can tell me I can't do that because it's going to materially, you know, materially affect the road? I don't think so. I mean, is there a county engineer's report that goes with that? That says that would tip the road over? You know, I don't think that's necessarily the case. Same thing on number three, condition of 141, right? This subdivision, is it, is there an engineer's report that says, county engineer that says, we can't handle three more homes on Highway 141? That seems like a bit of a stretch to me. Okay? Future development of the lots will decrease enjoyment of the Los Hills? Again, any development, I heard the word earlier, limit, limit development. That was one of the complainants, limit development. Limit it to what? Is it limited to zero, to one, to three, to 10, to 20? I mean, at some point, we've got to put magnitudes on these things. We can't just say limit development when the, what you actually mean is no development. I mean, there's a, there's a huge difference there, okay? Number five, this will, this development will increase land values and therefore increase taxes. Well, that's wrong on two fronts. One, if it would increase any values, it would increase them in AE, not AP, right? And a different categories are taxed differently. Everybody around it, most people around it are AE, except for ironically, five of the people on this petition, five homes on this petition, went through this process and are now AE. So everybody around him is AP. These are people that live on 141. The very road we're talking about being impacted so negatively, there is precedent for AE on 141 within a mile and a half or a mile of this property. So I think, you know, we just, I heard the word consistency. I think we need to be consistent, okay? Construction of new homes will affect the watershed. Again, you're telling me that three homes is going to affect. The aquifer. As opposed to the tens of thousands of acres of irrigated farmland that shares that same aquifer? That, that just doesn't ring true to me. The future lots will add additional strain to county services. I would argue, as a homeowner in a very remote area, this would actually increase my safety. I think there's going to be a lot less likelihood of someone coming on my property if there's another home or two in the area, right? So, and again, has, has anybody from the county services, fire, sheriff, said, we can't handle three more homes? Are we limiting development in their entire service area to, to less than three homes? I, I just don't think you can make that statement as a public without any backup. I really don't. And then lastly, the proposed subdivision endangers the fertility or fragility of the Los Hills by content, by leveling, compacting, and restructuring the soil. Was that not the case in 2004? When the very person circulating this petition built his new home, not 500 feet from where he's saying, I can't build a house? I, I don't understand the hypocrisy that it was okay in 2004 for the, for the petitioner, but it's not okay for me now or a new family? That doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm just here to talk about landowner rights, property owner rights, my rights. You know, this, this petition seems to be based on a lot of public opinion and emotion. If we're violating the law, if we're outside the letter of zoning requirements, then let's talk about that. But as a property owner, I think, you know, at some point, we've got to protect property owner rights too. So that's what I have to say. But as far as the project, I'm going to let Brenton speak to that, the actual project, the magnitude. Thank you.
Need to stop anything or just introduce myself?
Just let us know who you are.
Yep, Brenton Feigtenberger, and I'm working with Doug on this. Um, I have some handouts that might be helpful. I don't know if you guys want them at the end or now.
Can we see them?
And you might have something already that's helpful and we can give some.
I'd make a motion that we receive the handouts into the record.
I'll second it.
Probably. Yeah, this is just, it's, it doesn't have to be received or not, I'm just saying it. Just to be able to like visit with the aid and the public can see it as well.
Okay.
I just want people to understand, but the spirit of what people want it to stay is what it's points, is, is what I tried to do. And I'm going to explain that in a second.
Hang on just a second.
Yep.
Do we, if we had a motion, we get a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so just to give you a little backstory, and I'll try to keep this to three or four minutes or even if there's not a requirement, but we started buying some of the land. There's like 200 and how many acres here? 290 acres, I'm a part owner, I'm an avid hunter and outdoorsman. I, I built my own home actually and had to go through this process just outside of Woodbury, outside of city limits, just to be able to build. And so I know, so people can kind of hear the word subdivision and think Whispering Creek. And that's not what I'm trying to do here. We started buying some of the land, starting two years ago. That's all highlighted in red on this map. We bought the whole entire eastern half and then this spring, we bought the western half minus this last parcel. And my goal was, when I contacted Daniel and worked with Doug, was to buy everything but, but the, the remaining home. Because, you know, a 600 or $700,000 home is not a lot of hunting value to me. So my goal was to just buy the land off, the remaining land. So we would own, we would finish owning all the land but the house that number four, I wrote, I wrote number four, just so you can follow along, sits on. But I talked to Daniel, he said it would require a minor subdivision to do that and a, and a rezone. And in that process, I was like, hey, I, I don't want to, I could have gone down the route, and I know people are fearful that we're trying to create a ton of lots out of here. If I was doing that, you could probably create, could petition and create probably 13, 14, 12 lots. We're not doing that. We're asking for a few and one of which is not even buildable. And the reason I did that is to A, split it off and to have, if I ever sold it to another hunter, because I work with Land Legacy, they're a hunting consultant out of Missouri. They always advise me on how to split parcels. And so when we went to, if I was going to go through the, the headache and, and cost, which, I mean, you guys are probably well aware, well more than $10,000 to, to split this. Lots of time, effort, working with Matt, knowing just like, hey, if this, if I ever sold this hunting land, how would this be the most valuable? So, I mean, yes, people could build homes on some of these, but that is not my intention. I'm not trying to build a home. And in fact, even if we didn't change the zoning, you could probably build 10 homes on this 290 acres without any zoning changes. And you guys are probably familiar with that. And that's what I wrote on here is that you can build two homes, as you guys are aware, on every AP parcel. And if a, a road splits it, correct me if I'm wrong, a D, a DOT road splits a 40 acre quarter, quarter, you can also put two homes on each side. Is that not correct?
You can split, but you have.
Not split though, I mean, like, I was, I was advised that if, if a road splits a 40 acre AP, you could put two homes on each side of that split road.
You can split it. You can split it, yes. You would need a AE. For that, what happens is quarter, quarter.
Yeah.
Is defined in the subdivision ordinance as the quarter, quarter, but person can actually split it, parcel. Under the natural boundary, we call it split.
Yeah.
But it's very rare to get the four homes on each side. So.
Correct, but I was, I didn't even know that. Right. And, and I was even explaining though, if you own just on one side, all that's all I'm trying to make the point is, is. You can see that I tried to actually follow pretty closely how the quarter quarters lie. So you couldn't, I don't even really think you could probably get more than two homes per quarter, quarter. So ironically enough, even though this is being asked, and that's why Daniel's shaking his head. Even though this is being asked to go in AE, I'm not. The spirit of it stays, I think, actually. In congruency with AP. If I was trying to get two acre lots only, we would have created a lot more. But. As you could see how this is drawn up. I would want to be able to sell to a hunter. One and five. That's why I wrote the X's for access, because if you own hunting land, you want to be able to access it well. If you don't have access, it requires easements. And even then, how are you going to get a tractor in there, a skid steer? I did work on this very parcel this spring with a skid steer. On the right side. Though people who we currently own. The land, all the land to the east, but. If that, that owner wants to be able to own number two and three, or if more than likely, say the homeowner of number four wants to buy number three. That's why I, I made the one, the only distinction between two and three, that could be one whole parcel. But. There's a decent chance if the person who wants horses or something else wants to buy another seven or eight acres, you can do so. But. I think, I just wanted to point out that the spirit of what is actually being drawn up. Not exactly, but with 95% congruency lines up with, I would say roughly. Agricultural preservation. And really, when you look at the zoning, AP to AE, the amount of things you're allowed to do out there, even if I died and got hit by a truck, someone else bought this. Is all pretty similar. And there's not a lot of difference. We're not, we're not trying to zone this commercial. We're not trying to. Do weird things. It's, it's ironic that I'm literally just trying to buy the rest of the land. And not the house. And because a road goes through that to the house, it creates more parcels. And when people who have never done this process see a, a notice come across their door that says minor subdivision, they freak out and think that Whispering Creek 2.0 is coming. And that's, that's not what this is. So I just want to close this in saying, we have bought and spent a significant, if you know, land values amount of money. To buy the land surrounding this last parcel. And this is the final purchase that we would like to make in the next six to nine months. And, you know, there's other ways that we can accomplish this and actually get the same outcome. I think from, from what we've, but I didn't think this would, I mean, it would seem ridiculous that we'd have to move lot lines. And, and do weird, not weird, but just. Have to go in weird ways when really we're trying to just accomplish what I think everyone is worried about this being, which is. This is staying in a, no more than two homes per 40 acres, which is what it's zoned for. And I'm not trying to build homes. I just want the hunting land. Could it be built by homes someone down the road, 10, 50, 100 years? Maybe. But so could if you just kept it AP. So anyways, I, this is frustrating and, and I've tried to. Keep things in the spirit of, of. What I think the intended use of the Les Hills. So, thank you.
We have public that wants to comment on this application. Other than what we have in writing.
I have a question. I have a question. Yeah, you, you want to.
Yes.
It's, it's real simple. I'm just curious, how far, you know, do you live from this particular area? Are you in close proximity or you live?
Yeah, I mean, I grew up in Sioux City. I live in Dakota Dunes.
Okay.
I have other land in Monona County. I have farmland in Monona County. I don't have any farmland in Woodbury County, but.
Okay.
I have other land.
Okay, you just had mentioned like you were living somewhere remote, so I wasn't sure if you were in that area or in that proximity.
No, I mean, we're, we're, and we bought it as a, as a second home. You know, it's our weekend getaway. We haven't been out there as much lately as we'd like, but you know, we've never, we've never moved there permanently.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, now public, back to public. Come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, please, if you'd like to make a comment. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Cindy Foy. I, my address is 2470 270th Street in Hornick. I live about two and a half miles southeast of the parcel that is up for rezoning. A few years ago, we were given the opportunity to. Put our land in a program with the Heritage Foundation. And one of the main criterias that we didn't do it. Is because I wanted to build my house on top of the hill. I could not do that according to the scenic byway, Los Hills, Golden Hills, the Heritage Foundation. No one would let me do that. Only because of the, it would, the house would be seen by people driving on Old 141. So my husband and I, we work hard, we eliminate cedar trees. Clean the brush, do whatever we can to try to preserve the Los Hills' natural habitat. If this rezoning goes through. And I've heard anywhere from four houses to 10 houses would be built on this. And even if it's four houses. All of those houses, because it's on top of a hill, would be seen so much by the scenic byway. And that is against what the preservation, conservation. Goal is. They also would, you know, I, I didn't look at exactly how many acres, but probably talking 20 to 25 acres of prairie grass habitat. Will be destroyed because of this. They'll put lawns in and. Driveways and everything else in, in place of it. You know, I don't fault anyone at all for wanting to come out in the country and live. That's what we did. We moved from Sioux City to the country to get away from the noise, the traffic. People. We love it out there. But we're afraid that if this goes through, you're going to be setting a precedence. That. The gentleman that owns and maintains a 250 acres around this parcel, as well as other landowners in the Los Hills. Will want to rezone, build houses, and it will just take away from the view scape of the Los Hills' scenic byway.
Cindy, I've got a question for you. You said that different agencies denied your ability to build a house on your property.
Correct, correct. We have a house already on our property and in their program. I said, well, what if I want to relocate mine to. A hilltop right behind where. My current house is, and they said, no, you could not do it because it was against the restrictions of that program.
So you put, you put an easement on your property with these agencies? Is that? Am I following you right? You put an easement?
No, 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 we just, we just have, we have 80 acres and we could put part of this program or part of our land into this Heritage Foundation program. You know, it's been like 15 years and I can't exactly remember what the program all involves. I know a couple of the landowners have gotten into that program. But because I couldn't put my house or a building on top of this hill. We opted to not get into the program. Because it was going to be in the scenic byway. The landscape.
Thank you.
That's our concern.
Thank you.
I, I, I have a question, Cindy. So I'm, I'm confused as to who restricted you from building.
The program that we wanted to get into with the Heritage Foundation.
Is it Iowa Natural Heritage? Just try to be clear. I mean, I'm trying to be clear so everybody knows we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, Iowa National Heritage Foundation, yes. And I didn't want to do that. I. So we opted to not get into the program.
Okay.
So would, if you're not in the program, then you don't have any restrictions on you from doing that now, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, that's.
Yeah, we can do.
If you wanted, if you wanted to, you'd go through the same process we're going through right now, correct?
We could do.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. So Cindy, we're, we're asking questions, so we went over the three minute mark, but.
But we wouldn't do that because it's like. Going to be in the view of. The landscape, you know, everybody would see a house up there.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I think that's all we have for you. Hey, anybody else?
My name is Gary McMullin. I live at 2375 250th Street. Hornick, Iowa, and my property is right across the road from the proposed 252nd overlook, a five lot minor subdivision, which is. A 36 acre portion of the property. To do this minor subdivision, the property needs to be rezoned from ag preservation to ag estates. I am opposed to both and for several reasons. I am against the rezoning because I believe this land should be preserved for many years. To come for people to enjoy the unique land form because once it's gone, it's gone forever. The proposed 252nd overlook, a minor subdivision, will be seen by the Les Hills' natural scenic byway and takes away from the natural beauty that many people drive along and enjoy. I've had school kids come up. Take their graduation pictures because it's so beautiful and unique. I believe we should try to keep as much of this land form. Preserved as possible. I would like it to be noted that Woodbury County Soil and Water Conservation District wishes to point out that this parcel is currently zoned ag preservation. And this designation should be retained as part of the protective Los Hills land form. This was in the stakeholder comments, page 49 in the packet. There are many properties in this area that have easements put on there to preserve their land, and I believe this partial should be kept ag preservation to protect this land also. My concerns for this proposed minor subdivisions are follows. The minor subdivision will be on poorly maintained road with a very steep incline with very little gravel. And I feel this road will deteriorate with the added traffic flow. The proposed minor subdivision would be located within agricultural area, and I believe this could make a dangerous situation when farmers are hauling their grain with more traffic and the steep incline on the poorly maintained road. Which has many curves. If the semi full of grain would have to move over for traffic, the shoulder is very soft and the ditches are very deep. There are many properties in this area that have easements on them to preserve the land, and I believe this partial should be kept ag preservation to protect this land also. The, the proposed minor subdivision could possibly have five houses and could be families with children. And the proposed minor subdivision sits right in the middle of some of the heavy, heavily hunted properties with hunting all around and could be dangerous situation. If a child would wander onto one of these areas during hunting season. There is one neighbor in here right now that's had three cows shot. So accidents do happen. My home. My home assessment values have increased drastically, and I believe this minor subdivision will cause them to increase even more. But potentially lower my selling value because of the change in the scenic views. The strong attendance in, in here tonight, along with petition consisting of many signatures is a clear indicator. Of widespread concerns felt by local residents and taxpayers who are opposed to the rezoning of this said property known as 252nd overlook. When we purchased our land back in 2003, we thought, what a wonderful place and surrounding. Is zoned ag preservation, including the proposed minor subdivision, and thought this would help protect the surrounding area for developing too fast. And taking the scenic of beauty away from everyone. I feel having possibly five houses in such a small parcel of land would take away from the beauty of such a wonderful natural resource. I, Gary, would like it to be noted to be against both rezone. From ag preservation to ag estates and the Skinner five lot minor subdivision, opposed to both. Thank you.
Thank you. We have questions for Gary? No? Yes?
I have a question for Brent. So just so I'm clear.
Yep.
When you were talking about, you know, the land and the purchase of land and, and more, what I really would like to know is the intent. What I heard from you was hunting. I, I wasn't hearing building homes and everything, at least in the, in the near future.
Yep.
Obviously with the change.
It's possible.
Yeah, that is, it opens up the possibility.
Right.
But at the moment, the word subdivision is being used. Around, you know, and all this, but I, I'm not hearing that you're planning on building five homes.
If I was, I would have started two years ago because we spent six figures that year. So any smart developer. And I own a lot, a lot of real estate in Woodbury County. And I would have started two years ago because you wouldn't spend that much money. And then not start because you'd be losing. Time value of money or you'd be losing interest, either one. And so, no, I, I'm not. I've literally have bought and everything else but this last piece. And what people fail to realize is that. I actually am the person you want to own this 290 acres or 50 acres. If I was an investor. I would have already started splitting 40 acre lots with no permission nor rezoning and selling them as 20 acre lots with homes on them. And I would, I could have done that. Starting two years ago. But I didn't. I'm a hunter who probably spends too much money on hunting, just quite frankly, on hunting. And I actually think I'm the exact, exactly who they want. And talking about conservation, look into Land and Legacy, the consultants and good friends I use. The number one habitat consultants in the United States voted in 2022 or 2023. We do prescribed burns. We're working with the NRCS currently on the land. We are taking care of invasive cedars. I mean, people are talking about soil and water. I bet you I've spent more money. On conservation in the Les Hills than anybody else in this room by a mile. And I could prove it if you want. So I, I, it is, it's infuriating. Imagine spending that much and having an agreement to be able to buy the final whatever, because. How this land sits, if you were to come out there and I, it's hard because I'm out there all the time and no one, you know, Gary, myself and Doug are familiar, but. Though this parcel is actually quite, quite flat, and it's actually the best area to have corn, alfalfa. And soybeans, which if you're a hunter, is incredibly important to be able to have food to draw in deer late season hunting. And so, yeah, I'm, I have no intentions right now. Now, could it? If it got, if it got, but it also could if you said no. Like either way, what people don't realize is that whether this rezone happens or not. Or even honestly, even if the minor subdivision doesn't get approved. There's roughly the same number of homes could in theory be built by some future person.
I, I just think that what's important here for all of us to understand is the intent.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, is that, I feel like you answered your question.
If our intent was to develop a bunch of lots, well, I want to back up. We're talking about three. Okay, I know it's five on the subdivision. The current house sits on one of those five. Okay, so we're not, that house is already there. So we're talking about four incremental lots, one of which is unbuildable. The reason that. What's, I can't even see the lot numbers from there. The reason lot five is there. Is access. To the west, to the land to the west, so you can hunt it. There are three buildable lots there. We're talking about three lots. You heard me say that earlier. The intent is three lots. If our intent was Whispering Creek, we could get 15 lots on there, right? And I know the rumor mill said 10. It's not 10, it's three. And for anybody to do any further development on any of the other 254 acres, they'd have to come back in here and ask for it again. Right? This, this doesn't. Tell me if I'm wrong, this doesn't open up development on the other 254 acres of what was originally the 290. This, this is specific to that 36, correct? We're only asking for eight, for AE for that 36, not for 290. Is that correct? That's all we're asking for. So that designation would not apply to the rest of. To the rest of the timber. It's just that I think it's important that everybody understands that. That's all we're asking. Three lots. Three. And we can't split those three anymore. I can't come back five years from now and say, eh, you know, I know I said six acres, but I want to, I want to chop that into three twos. I can't do that. Right? Once we, once we say this is our plat, that's what you're approving is that plat. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're talking about three lots. So everybody's clear. Just want to clear that up.
Well, 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 wait a minute. We need you, we, if you're going to talk, I need you to come up to the microphone, folks.
Yeah.
If you're going to talk, I need you to come up to the microphone and state who you are and where you live, please.
I guess my question is. Why don't we just sell 36 acres, but the house is, it's there?
Yeah. Because access to the 67 acres we bought in April to the west of that. And so that where the best soils, the best CSR soils for growing corn, alfalfa and flat land is up there. And I've shot a deer there last year. My son. And I've shot a deer there last year. My son shot his first turkey. So, if someone else wants to buy all this land and lease it to me for very cheap, we could come at this another way, but to get access to that ground, that ground becomes very landlocked if I don't own this ground. So, to say, why do you don't just sell the thirty-six acres? Doug could, but we have an agreement. Like, this has been the plan. I've agreed to purchase all this land over time, so.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? The gentleman that spoke up here, could I get your name and address, please?
Yeah, Brenson Feitzemberger.
No, the guy before you. Sorry, we're going too fast here.
Leo Lidget. I own, I have two hundred and thirty acres about two miles south of here that does have easement on it from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation.
Okay.
And I have spent a lot, I think if we compared notes, I've owned this property for over forty years, and I've spent a lot more on conservation than you have.
Thank you.
As a point of order for efficiency of the meeting, I would suggest kind of navigating through individual comments and then discussing, including if the commission has individual questions for the public who has presented information to ask them after we've had a chance to navigate through everybody.
Okay, you've had an opportunity to talk, so I'm going to try and get someone else that hasn't spoken yet.
Let these guys speak two, three times already.
We'll get back to that if that's all right, please. If there's anybody else that would like to make a comment. Go through the public first. We're trying to be polite here.
My name's Doug Miller, and I got land a thousand feet from there, or whatever it is. Why don't they just, why can't he just buy it? Why's he got to subdivide it? A bordering piece of ground can just buy it. Huh?
Let's wait to the end. Let's get all the questions and then we'll.
And why subdivide it? If you're subdivided, it must mean building houses in. Why do you want houses if you're going to hunt it or plant corn? We're talking about very few acres. I know what it looks like up there. It's small. I got the ground that's got an easement on it also. You can't ever build on it. I don't know if we start giving people the right to subdivide. Farming's tough right now. Is everybody going to start doing it? Is it a money deal? I don't know. That's all I got.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Crowe, and I own the property right next to lots one and part of lot five.
Straight west.
It's just straight down, the ninety acres of pasture ground.
Yep.
My late husband has ran cattle on that ground since probably mid to late eighties. Very, very good friends with Doc Sorensen, the gentleman that originally owned the whole section of land, all of it, was very continuous. He gave my husband a start by allowing him to rent this ground, and he was very clear. He was actually very much against hunting. It was never hunted. When Doc owned it, my ground is not hunted. I let the game warden out there. He goes out there and takes care of tree stands and stuff that gets improperly put on my ground. I am one of the landowners that has had their cattle shot and killed by hunting out there. I guess I have the same question as Doug. If you want to hunt it, why are you subdividing it? That, while you have no intent, and I will give you the benefit of the doubt that you have no intent to subdivide this and put lots of houses out there, by subdividing it and changing it from AP to AE, you will this to your kids, you give this, sell this to somebody else. Economies change. It opens the door for anybody else to do exactly what you say you're not going to do. I want to be a good neighbor. I don't want to have people out there building houses. I also don't want to be responsible having these turned into nine acre lots. People build nice houses out there. They think, hey, I'm in the country. I can have an ATV out there. What's to say that these people, if they in the future build lots, have ATVs out there or whatever they are, and end up in my pasture and something happens to them? I become partially liable for that, if not fully liable for that. It's always been for as long as it can be as to be, you know, the lowest hills and to be grazed by cattle and not to be built on. And so, you know, I respectfully wish that you would deny this request. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
My name's Jim Thomas. I am a pastor over at Holly Springs. I live directly north of this property. My house, actually, my office window faces across the valley, and depending on how high any house would be built on lots going into, I would get to see it. So, after, you know, kind of, I walked through the application, looked at through this application that Skinner Holdings submitted. I've got a couple of concerns that I think you should think about as you consider whether or not to accept this. Doug brought up just at the beginning about the idea in two thousand and four versus two thousand and twenty-five, why the changes? Well, the changes are because Woodbury County did a survey with Simco and came up with a twenty forty plan for the future of Woodbury County. And so, one of the things that was important was designating open spaces. And they suggest that this doesn't affect the open space deal at all. But if you could go, Mr. Priestley, if you could go to like, I think it's page forty-two on this application, where you have what you guys did on, what Woodbury County guys did on the land. There you go. That's it. That's it right there. If you'll notice those green deals all the way along there, that's what Woodbury County has said. This is future land use. What Skinner Holdings is suggesting here by changing it from AP to AE is the idea that every one of those spots, we just put two, three, four, five acre estates all along that area. Well, the whole purpose of that area is to be sparsely populated. And so, when we start changing things and we start adding and going, you know, I understand it's only three houses, but you're opening the door. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to read you what the zoning committee and the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors said in the twenty forty comprehensive plan, where you guys made it, where you guys talked about natural use, and you talked about the idea of open space designation. And just for your references on the document I had, it's on page one fifteen. But here's what, here's what it says, and this would have been approved by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors. Protecting these natural resources through the thoughtful location of new development has been identified by Woodbury residents as a priority when considering the future of their county. From two thousand and one to two thousand and nineteen, the population of the county remains steady. However, the amount of developed land increased by about nineteen point four percent, with growth primarily on the east side of Sioux City and the city of Sergeant Bluff. And we all know that's the Whispering Creek deal. With this change in mind, care should be taken to make use of urban areas where infrastructure has already been constructed when building new housing or commercial developments.
Mr. Thomas?
What's up?
Sorry, but your three minutes is up. We've got to limit this because we've got a lot more people in the room.
Um, okay.
Pass off your notes if you want to to somebody else that'd like to read them, but we need to give everybody the opportunity.
Okay, well, I guess when we go to the second section, I'll do the rest of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Glenna Tevis. I live and own and live on a century farm that's located at twenty-five thirty-nine County Road, D twenty-five, Old Highway one forty-one, about two and a half, three and a half miles south of the parcel in question. Even though I live, you know, not right next door to it, what happens up in those hills affects me too. According to the Agricultural Estate Zoning District definition, what's being requested here, this is to provide for a limited increase in a small acreage development, including controlled expansion of residential uses in appropriate locations throughout the country, county. Excuse me. It seems that this is not particularly controlled expansion because we don't know what's going to happen with this property. It's going to be perhaps subdivided, you know, into these small acreages, but what's going to happen to it in the future? Right now, it's claimed that we're not going to build on here, but we might in the future. Maybe five, maybe ten, maybe fifteen, who knows what? We need to think about the future when we're thinking about this area in the Les Hills. The incursion into the Les Hills is really critical for us as citizens. The erosive nature of the soil, the importance of natural habitat, all of which people have talked to already, and the views from the Les Hills Scenic Byway, which I live on, are compelling reasons for all seven counties that are involved in this land form region to develop specific policies related to development in the Les Hills, not just relying on general county development. It's our responsibility as citizens to be good stewards of the land and to protect the integrity of the landscape. I'm not saying that you're not integrity, you know, filled with integrity and wanting to protect, but we need to think about the future, long term into the future. Building homes that take advantage of the scenery and the views also damage the scenery and the views for people who already live there and who travel through the area as part of that scenic byway. There are already homes on the ridges, on the very tops of those ridges that really obstruct the skyline landscape of the Les Hills right behind me. And allowing this kind of development to happen is going to be like the camel getting its nose under the tent of a person, the slippery, first step in a slippery slope. To all of a sudden, in the Les Hills, we've got lots and lots and lots of building, which is dangerous. We do know that housing development construction in some of those seven counties has caused erosion, sedimentation, and stormwater management for the homeowners and for the county. Decisions today that you make will affect the Les Hills forever. So, I urge you to carefully consider when you are thinking about these applications and deny them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Gary Chapman. My property is up twenty-seven seventeen Garner, which is on around the bend on what we call Big Egypt Road. The development that you're looking at is what we call from the hills, Seven Cities Hill. I mean, we drink beer in Holly Springs. We drink beer in Hornick. And this is Big Egypt Road, and this is Seven Cities Hill. You can go up to Seven Cities Hills and see Seven Cities at night, and I've done it many, many times. The purpose that I would like to have for a moment is to remind you what a treasure that we have in this section. And I want to remind you of what your responsibilities were when you took a position on this board, and it's the intent to preserve public and private open spacing, including wooded areas, streams, and flood plains, recognizing these areas as resources to be conserved rather than developed. My property is right now under easement, or under permanent easement to the Niff Conservancy in Des Moines, and several of these property owners out here have done the same thing that I have done with my property. And I would hope that you guys would think about what's down here and what to preserve for our children and the children's children. I can go back quite a ways in the history of this section. Originally, it was Deluxe Ranch from the thirties and the forties. It was sold to four individuals, and some of them still own part of that property. And it was then turned into the Skyline Ranch. My parents and myself and my brother rented that property, and it's eight miles around the circle from the top of the hill down to one forty-one, down to two hundred and eightieth street, back to Garner where I live, and then back to two seventieth, and then back to two hundred and fifty-second street. Eight miles around with no crossroads. You cannot access that. And that, to me, is a gem from the state of Iowa. And I would hate to see that developed into, and I shouldn't compare this, but to what's happened at Whispering Creek. I drove that road for thirty years, going to Stockyards to work every day, and it was a beautiful Hafki farm. And now, when you drive up there, they've got a speed limit about five, four, five miles out of town, thirty-five or forty miles an hour, and they have the condos stretched that whole distance.
Mr. Chapman?
And to me, that's, that's not in my heart.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up. I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up. You have three minutes, and your three minutes is up. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Vote with your heart, and if you have never driven down through what we call Biggie's Road, before you vote, you should drive through there. It's a national treasure.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's short. My name's Darlin McMullin, and I live at twenty-three seventy-five two hundred and fifty-second Street, Hornick, Iowa, right across the road from the proposed five lot minor subdivision. You know, we purchased our property because it was zoned AP, and the surrounding properties, they were also AP, and we want to keep the property that way and the properties around us. We do not want homes built across the street. I mean, it makes me sick to even think about it, and I know they're saying it's hunting ground, but there's tons of rumors that they could, if this doesn't go through, they'll build ten. Yet, come from you, Brenton, that we could move down and put ten houses. I don't appreciate that. You know, that's why the ten house rumor got spread by you. And, I mean, I'm just pointing out some facts, and I just want to say that I'm asking the zoning commission to do the right thing. I pray for you that you will do the right thing and deny the five lot minor subdivision application and zoning ordinance map amendment rezon application filed by Doug Skinner of Skinner Holdings LLC. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chad Brady, twenty-three eighty-nine two fifty-second Street. I just live on two fifty-second. Just by that over this proposed development. And a lot of the questions, concerns I had, everybody's been mentioning and bringing them up, and I don't want to just, you know, repeat all those questions and concerns, but I do like to, you know, be known that, which hasn't been brought up, is, is, you know, I know that land, been out there a long time very well and how unique it is. It is a special place, and the various owners, starting with Mr. Sorensen all the way through, Brenton and Doug, have been very gracious to let me still enjoy that land and be neighbors there. But I just would like to also point out that, you know, the neighbors were hearing, again, the lots and what could happen in the future, even though there's no intention at this point, and fully understand that. I think part of it too is we're also hearing owners that do not live in the area, that live in the dunes or in your place where you live, Brenton, up there by Sioux City. You have a beautiful place there as well. And so, when we bought the land and built out there, we, I would say, were fully invested. We're there. We live at that location. We, and we're seeing some other people that don't live in that area that want to rezon it and potentially, I'm going to say to them or down the future, whoever owns it, could all bring in more. I'd say to them, or down the future, whoever owns it, could all bring in more housing. But whereas, yes, and we purchased land out there. I have about sixty-five acres, but but this new potential could be someone coming in with, you know, three to eight acres. I can't remember all the acres. So that it, it, it just, you know, we're out there. That's what we see. And that kind of raises a lot of our questions and concerns, too, because we feel we're fully invested in, in that area and, and what, what that is. So that's kind of a lot of our questions. So I'd want to continue to add what some other people have brought up. That is also kind of another angle of, of, of our concerns and questions as a neighbor out there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We still on the first agenda item? Got not long to go.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yep. Anyone else want to speak to this?
Are you going to vote independently?
Do you want me to answer some of the questions from before?
If we have, everybody is done speaking, we can answer questions if you're ready, and then I'm, I'm sure we will have questions, I'm assuming. Okay?
Try to get all the questions there. What's that? I will, yeah. I'll try to get all the questions I heard. One of the questions was, why do you need it? I think I discussed that earlier, from a hunting standpoint and access. Heck, if I could, whatever number that is, magically include one with A, I would totally do it, but you can't, because this parcel was already created the way it was. So if you guys want to grant some magic wand and lump one with A, that'd be great. In fact, you could probably even do five with A, so that these, all these people and their rumors and, and everything that's going on. And then my other, the other point was, is like, why don't, why don't you just buy the whole thing? Well, I don't, just like they're saying, I, I'm not, I don't need that house. And if it was maybe like a fifty thousand dollar house I could rent out, I would maybe do that. But one of the gentlemen said, like, why don't you just buy the whole thing if you want that parcel? And it's because I, I don't need a six hundred thousand dollar house that, you know, I don't, I don't need a second home. I'm out there quite a bit, and so, but I, I don't need a, a second residence like that. That seems extreme. So I, I hope that answers the questions from earlier, and I, I think the only thing, I don't, I'll let Doug speak at the very end. I just want to remind, and I don't know how this ten-lot thing, all, all I was trying to say in conversations was that if you don't change zoning, there are landowner rights. We live in the United States of America, unlike other countries. And if you own something, you own something. And so AP says that you can have two homes as your owner rights with no, you don't have to ask anybody, you don't have to do anything. And all I was trying to say is that if I wanted to do that, I would have started two years ago. And second, you don't even need a, you don't need any hearings, you don't need any, anything, and you could build ten homes. I could show you. And I realized this after this, all this hubbub got started. So I just want to let people know that, like, that, their fears could come true regardless of who owns this, of more homes out there, and no one could stop them. And, but it's beside the point. The point of, that's ironic, is that the very person, a conservationist, is who they want to own this. And I can give you guys a laundry list of other farms we've owned and, and improved from the NRCS's mind. And, and none of them have had homes built on them, not one of the many. And so this is no different. And this one, I just want to keep for myself, because it's not an hour away, it's twenty minutes from my house. And I think if any landowner had spent the amount of money that we have to hear arguments that we're hearing that seem to be just opinions, it'd be like, I can build my house here, but you can't. Someone down the road couldn't build across the street. It, it does seem somewhat hypocritical and frustrating if I, if you put yourself in the shoes of spending that, that much money on hunting land. And I could, I could just abandon it and sell it all, and who knows? A developer could come in and buy it, all the land, and that would be their worst-case scenario. So I find it ironic that they're literally trying to push someone out the door who has a history in the Les Hills of buying hunting farms, conservationally improving them, with proof. I could send this through the NRCS records. And then either selling them to another conservationist who likes hunting or keeping them like this. So I'll let.
Finish up real quick. Part of the reason I sold it, what I did to Brenton, is for that very reason, right? I never listed it. Okay, this was never listed. I've known Brenton for a while. That's what his organization does, right? Property management, property betterment. So you're right, that's why I did that. I want to speak a little bit to the several comments about, why didn't you, why don't you just sell it to one person? That's, honestly, that's really nobody else's business. That's like me saying, why don't you sell your house, because there's people that will pay more for it? What? I don't want to sell my house, right? I don't know why anybody else's opinion on what I should do with my property enters into this. But I want to, I want to try to do, I'm going to make an offer. Everybody seems very, very, very concerned about the future. Everybody seemed very, very, very quick to throw the word easement around, okay? I would be willing, as a landowner, to put an easement in place and limit it to three homes. So then nobody has to worry about what future generations do with it. That land would be underneath, that thirty-six acres would be in an easement limited to three additional homes. I'm just trying to prove that I'm not out trying to put a hundred homes there. I'd be perfectly happy doing that. So if anybody has any objections to that, just let us know. But I'm willing to do that as an amendment.
I have a question, just some background information. I noticed when I looked up the property owners of the additional property that surrounds this, this subdivision, there's three different owners.
Brenton could speak to, Brenton could speak to that.
And they're in the Farm Bureau office. Is that right? Is the address that goes to the Farm Bureau office on?
That's where my executive assistant takes all the mail.
Are, are those hunting prop, I mean, hunting associations, or what are those? Or that, is that your individual businesses or?
Speak to it real quick.
Yes, absolutely.
Manona Land Restoration, ironic that I was talking about earlier, it's literally the name. Manona Land Restoration LLC owns the eastern side. Habitat Restoration Services LLC owns the, currently bought the, the western side so far. I am a part-owner and the managing member of both.
Okay, so the, are those properties in some kind of easement as well?
The current ones?
Yeah, the, the major.
No, basically, the, the NRCS gives you equip money to improve the conservation on ecologically sensitive areas. And so because we work with Land and Legacy, who helps us with this, they help us consult on how to conservationally, which also hunting-wise improves the habitat. So we're, we're interested in both, improving hunting and conservation. And so that is how, we, we don't, they're not on an easement, like, they're not on a conservation, like a CRP easement. They're not in a Heritage Foundation easement. But we work with them on any property we own to see how we can improve it. And then they typically, whether it's prescribed burns, whether it's to improve natives, to cut back cedars, so they're not encroaching, timber thinning, things like that, things that are approved and understood to be accepted widely by the conservation world.
So this is a privately owned business. It's not considered like a, a conservation board, like a county?
No, yeah, I mean, it's a private business, correct. Yeah, yeah. We work with government agencies, but we don't, we're not like a Heritage Foundation or anything like that. Yep.
That doesn't restrict you then, basically?
No, no, there's not like, yeah, we don't have like a charter or something like that, that, that restricts us. I mean, that, that is our spirit, though. I mean, I think you can see our history. I can give you guys, if you want, I could email you all of land we have ever owned or currently do own in Les Hills. And there's not been one home built on the, on the hun, probably over a thousand acres now. So I think that's a decent history. And this is maddening. I've never had to deal with this.
So something, something that I've always had a little bit of a problem with is we've had somebody mention livestock being shot, and you've got a housing development in the middle of hunting. Are you concerned about the safety of the owners of those homes?
I think you need to remember that. I'm not trying to make a development. I'm trying to split land off so that I can keep it and not the house.
Okay, but if somebody builds there?
Yeah, well, yeah, someone could if I didn't own it after that.
I know there's supposed to be
Right.
distance restrictions as far as.
There is, there is. DNR has restrictions, correct.
Okay, but we don't necessarily follow those because
Honestly, yeah. I'm sorry for the lady who had cattle shot. I predominantly hunt with a bow and arrow. Sometimes I hunt late season with a muzzleloader. So I don't know how in your right mind, unless you are one of the many people who shotgun hunt Woodbury County by pushing. And I think, I'm guessing that's how they probably got shot, but I don't participate in that kind of hunting, and nor does any of our properties. We selectively manage our hunting. I've taken classes through Clemson University, Alabama, on Deer Steward One and Two through the National Deer Alliance, the NDA now was the QDMA. It used to stand for Quality Deer Management Association. So I've taken classes. I know how to manage land from a conservation standpoint, because this is what I love to do. I mean, yes, I'm a business owner, owns businesses, but this is my passion. This is what I love to do, is own hunting land and improve it and improve conservation. I could name more flowers, probably, walking through that landscape. I'm guessing, unless there's an actual conservationist here, because I've learned over the past decade. And so it, it's frustrating to be called out as like this finance developer when I'm actually not that. So, but if I sell it, because if this is going to be a major headache, it's very possible that that person, the person that they are putting me out to be or thinking, that could be what happens. And oh, by the way, what I was trying to say earlier is that you don't need anyone's input to split a forty-acre lot once into twenty, twenty-acre lots and then build homes. That's within the rights of Woodbury County and the United States government. Like, that is rights. That's just landowner rights that no one needs approval for. This is only happening because of the weirdness of a parcel that I'm trying to strip off the hunting land and keep the house sold by itself.
Do you, do you restrict, like, how you hunt? You mentioned bow hunting and, and muzzleloader?
We own it. We let very few people hunt it. We let clients hunt it. Matt, Di, and Adam Keith, they're the owners of Land and Legacy. They have their own podcast, their own TV show. You guys could check them out if you want. They, Matt's one of my best friends. We became best friends when we started doing this years ago. That's why we created the LLC Manona Land Restoration. It's because we wanted to basically buy and conservationally improve and also hunting improve. And you make a little bit of money. You could probably make more, you know, flipping real estate in Woodbury, in Sioux City, but I enjoy it. And so we limit it to, we try to harvest deer that are at least four years or older. So I, I pass significantly more deer than I shoot. And turkeys-wise, is to improve the habitat, if you improve the prairies, if you take care of, you know, cedar encroachment, you're going to improve turkey populations significantly. So, you know, we improve far more than we take away, I assure you.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Go ahead, Tom.
I guess I'd just like to address the, the hunting issue. I, I live right on the eastern edge of Sioux City in an area that's changed a lot in the last forty, fifty years. When we first moved out there, four homes were what were in the area that now has over sixty. So we've seen a lot of change. But the hunting issue, we've had three horses and two had a cattle shot. But it's been thirty-five, forty years. When my dad didn't let people hunt is when that happened. The hunters we have now ask, they're responsible, so we haven't ran into those issues. So I guess I just want to kind of, I, I don't hunt myself, but I also want to defend some of the individuals that do and enjoy it and responsibly hunt. And, and like I said, the area we're in, five homes is now over sixty. So I've seen a lot of change in what's happened. One question I did have is, of the acres you're talking about, how many undivided quarter, quarters are there in the two hundred and fifty-acre piece? Is it?
There is, and you should have it in the map, two, one, two, three. The only one, because we got a ten thirty-one, do you guys familiar with the ten thirty-one exchange? So the only reason why this next one, as you work your way up, has split is because there's X amount of money allocated to that. So I don't know if you consider that split or not. It's actually not, because we own both sides of the lines, so we can move the lot lines however we want. That's what I was trying to allude to earlier. And then, but those are the only whole forty-fortys, all the other ones, because of the, the two fifty-second splits them, are, are whole, but none of those have been split.
But those, the road splits, they're still owned by?
Oh, yes. Well, one side is Habitat Restoration Services, which is one entity.
I guess what I'm getting at, just to clarify on your issue, that there's roughly eight?
Yes.
You're talking, so, so fifteen homes, additional homes.
You could.
Technically could go in that area.
Yeah, with, with no requirement.
Under, under the current AP.
On your current AP, yeah. And that's why I literally tried to make this split up to follow as close to the quarter quarters as I could, because I've done this before. And I tried to do it to keep the spirit of what's going on. If you didn't have a weird, unique parcel, like it sits on, created by some prior landowner, probably for some reason, you know, maybe to split it off. And so then we wouldn't probably even be in this room tonight.
Dan, how would that work? The proposal that he brought up with the limit permanently to three homes as an amendment?
Including the existing?
You're talking about like a deed restriction or?
Right.
Something?
Probably restrictive covenant, probably would it be?
It'd be a restrictive, yeah. You're along the right lines as far as a restrictive covenant that would have to be. It's sort of a similar situation when like a pavement agreement has been imposed by, or supervisors.
I guess, I, I don't know if anybody responded to that, or if that was a comment that they felt favorable towards Mr. Skinner's proposal.
Anything from the public on that potential proposal?
You want to say it again? So my, my proposal was, or my proposal was that we put the thirty-six acres as proposed under an easement, because I've heard the word easement thrown around a lot tonight. We put it under an easement that there can only be three additional homes ever built there, ever. You're talking this on the? Okay, yeah, because, because.
For one thing, I don't understand any of this stuff, how it's going to work, because they're, they're talking about hunting property, selling a house that's further in, so the person that buys this house is going to drive through this hunting property every day to get to the road. Is that correct?
No.
What do you mean, no? He says yes, you say no.
It's not correct.
They're not going to have to drive?
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we can't discuss away from the microphones, people. Let's be respectful. Let's speak to the microphone. Let everyone know who you are. We can't speak from out in the public, out in the, out in the chairs. So please, let's try to maintain some.
My name is Gary McMullin, and I live right across the road from this.
I know, this is.
The problem that I'm having to understand this is they're selling, saying they, they want to plot these lots out, and, and, but they're saying they're not going to sell them. They're going to be hunting ground. But the house sits behind it, so that, that, when that person leaves to go the driveway, it goes right through that area that's supposed to be hunting ground. I just can't imagine how that will work. I mean, would you drive through a house or with hunting ground all over, your kid sitting in the back seats and people shooting a gun?
Can we let him speak? Yes, please.
Actually, it's, it's very interesting. You probably, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it or not, but deer can be conditioned quite, quite quickly. They've showed us in college studies, University of Alabama's done this, University of Tennessee has done it, or Dr. Craig Harper. The reason why some people are, have the own television shows of hunting deer in urban areas with a bow and arrow is because they get so conditioned to human beings. So I predominantly would hunt that area with a bow and arrow, as I currently do. So it wouldn't really change that much. And I might shoot a turkey with my son with a four-ten, but that would be beyond the two hundred-yard distance, well beyond. Because if you know that area, if you're up in there, familiar with it, it doesn't affect that. And turkeys don't get weirded out by vehicles, and actually, decent amount of deer don't. So it would be somewhat impacted of, you know, whether there's traffic or not. But once again, that's like telling someone in this room, telling me I know how to hunt or what attracts deer or any of that. It's like, I, I don't know, we're getting into a lot of just opinions and not a lot of doesn't seem to be much substance, but that's my opinion.
Just real quick on the three houses thing. Something nobody's talked about yet. This property lies directly north of the dairy. You're about right. You would approve putting three houses in that would be some of the closest proximity to the dairy other than the, the houses that sit at the foot of the, the hilder. This has been a fight in, in Woodbury County Board of Supervisors for years about the smell. And you're talking about putting something closer to the dairy at the top of the hill? That doesn't make a lot of common sense to me as far as creating a whole nother set of problems for the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors.
We've been at the Skyline Ranch for twenty-five years. I went up and down Big Egypt Hill three or four times a day. Sometimes with a pickup, sometimes with a tractor. And I will guarantee you, because of the makeup, not of the gravel, but of the lost part of the hills, the clay underneath that. You will not have access to that in the spring. And after a heavy rain, you're going to have to wait. So you're going to have to tell. The maintenance department that they're going to have some extra duty. Because I've been stuck on that road more than once in the spring. More than twice and probably more than ten times. And when you're stuck, all you can do is turn around and go back down. And come back into what is called Big Egypt Y and come in from the north. And that's the same problem over there. Down in that big gully. You've got the lost hills clay underneath there. I don't care if you got this much gravel on top. It will not hold. I'm not an engineer. I don't want to be an engineer, but all I'm telling you is what happens. So you're going to have some excess problems up there.
Hi, I'm Cindy Foy. I'd like a little clarification, please. So Mr. Skinner is proposing to put an easement with only three lots, three potential houses. Three. Right, but three additional. So would you then still rezone this to AE or would it stay as AP?
It would, I'm just trying to figure out what you're saying.
It would still be rezoned to AE. Okay. And, and that's his proposal to do the, the. Three lots or three houses with an easement. But there again, if you rezone this. That doesn't stop anyone else, future lowest hills from, you're setting a precedence. For anybody else in the lowest hills can do this, that can rezone their property. And I guess I'm, I'm afraid that down the road. Not just in this area and, and this gentleman's property right next to it. Because like he said, he has a right to build houses. One or two on the forty acres or each of his four parcels that he has. He can build houses without going through this. But my concern is. Will other landowners in the less hills? Because we've set a precedence and rezone this, change the landscape, change the viewscape. You know, where does that end?
The precedent's already been set. There are four or five landowner, I can't remember if it's four or five. On the petition, who signed the petition, whose land was changed from AP to AE. To allow them to build the houses they currently live in. So we're not setting the precedent. Let's be clear. There is AE all around this property. That used to be AP. I thought putting this land in an easement with the three home, three additional home restriction was a reasonable accommodation. I understand Gary doesn't like it because he's the one that's most affected by it. But I don't, but that doesn't nullify the fact that I'm trying to compromise. To satisfy as many needs as we can. Okay, when, when Chad built his house. Gary could see it. And Chad could see Gary's. Was that not a problem then? I, I don't understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we can stay AP. That's fine.
Do we have anyone else in the public that has a comment? They'd like to share for the record? Are we to the point where we want to close the public hearing? Or do we have more questions? Comments?
We have, we have the additional public hearing where there's going to be quite a bit of redundancy to both the split and the rezone as both topics have appeared in this public hearing. So virtually, we're going to be closing one, having to look at a recommendation on this one. And then basically going back in and understanding the rezone and kind of rehashing a lot of the same materials.
It's our pleasure.
I guess if we don't have any more comments from the floor. Make motion to close the public hearing.
Is that a motion? Okay, that's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor say aye. Now it's up to either more questions from us or. If you're ready to entertain a motion.
Just for clarification, we're on the subdivision plat right now at this point in time.
Dan, can I make a statement quick?
Yes.
I just need to make a statement, uh, and Dan is aware of this as well, because I spoke to him today regarding this item, um, both items in particular. As a commission member, it was my responsibility to inform Dan that I am personal friends with multiple individuals in this audience. And those that have signed the petition. Um, I've used a lot of this ground out here for my own recreational use, not as a private property owner, but as friendships with individuals in this audience. I also have a member in this audience that was a former employee of mine within my previous position. And so I made it known to Dan. That I would have a conflict of interest. Uh, and I do not feel like I can make a fair and impartial vote. To be fair for both the property owners and the petitioner, so therefore I will be abstaining.
My question then is, do you have a financial interest in this project?
I do not.
Then most of us know a lot of the people out here and are friends of ours. And if that were the case, that would disqualify a lot of us. And so I don't think that's going to work. I don't think that's going to work. I've heard that only financial interest is what will discount you from voting.
And I respect that uh, statement. And I had that same conversation with Dan this afternoon. And shared that I do not have a financial interest and. That the burden of proof uh, for conflict is on the individual member, not the commission as a whole. And I don't feel like I can make a fair decision based on the relationships and the statements that I just mentioned.
True. Hey, other commissioners? Questions, comments? Just to make it clear, if we do decide to. Make a recommendation to the, the Board of Supervisors on this item. It is still up to the Board of Supervisors what happens here. We make recommendations. We listen to everyone. We listen to the concerns. And um, they have the ultimate decision. There could be some accommodations. I know these hills, I know they're. The less hills, I know they're a high impact um, area for a lot of people. Uh, Conservation Board looked at it at one point in time. So there would have been hunting if the Conservation Board had purchased this too, just to let everybody know. I understand the development part of it because. I don't like to see things develop necessarily, but I know that this county is. It needs acreages. I think a lot of you that have split off acreages on your own property. Know that you want family members close to you. This may not be family members, but the situation is similar. I don't know if that smooths the path at all, but. I mean, the conservation portion of it, they're trying to take care of the land that's surrounding the area, but they're asking for. A development for the county for them. You know, it's hard to determine who's going to benefit from it.
I, I have a comment as well.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I'm a conservationist and like Brent, I'm a hunter. I'm both. And you can be both. And I love those hills. Uh, lived here now over thirty years in this area down, down on the bottom. I don't have the beautiful view y'all have in the hills, which I appreciate. Love riding my Harley through those hills. Want to protect them as much as we possibly can as board members. At the same time. I'm hearing compromise from the landowner that. Could certainly help all of you and your concerns. Um, regarding the easement, the three home easement. Uh, in the long run, development's going to happen. At some point in time down the road, no matter who the landowner is. What I heard today from Brent, Brenton is the fact that, you know, he wants to, he wants to keep that land as pristine as he can. His primary passion is hunting. And you can't have sixty homes on that ground and, and still have deer and turkeys to hunt. So, you know, I, it's, this is not an easy topic for any of us for sure, but. I think we have to find a road to compromise that's best for all of you. Uh, landowners and all the concerned citizens about the beauty and the nature of the hills. That's my comment.
If I may, uh, Chair Chris Summer Zant had mentioned the, the process of what's next, uh, as far as this procedure. This board tonight, the zoning commission does look at. The essence of the ordinance, the facts of the case, everything it has presented. And they put together a recommendation that goes before the Board of Supervisors. This agenda item is specific to the plat, meaning the design and the split of the lots. As, as far as uh, the general makeup, lots one through five. The next agenda item is the merits of the rezone, just kind of spite, splicing those two apart. But it's still essential that we define the, these processes. Now, a recommendation comes out based on the plat. As well as the, the rezone. And what happens is, depending on how things go tonight. Regardless of this recommendation, the Board of Supervisors will take this up uh, through their uh, process. Now, it's very important to point out that the subdivision plat itself typically becomes a straight agenda item. At the Board of Supervisors level. What that means is it's positioned on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors relative. To the rezone, which is in our next agenda item. And the rezone itself requires up to three public hearings at the Board of Supervisors level to consider. Uh, the concerns, of course. And in that three public hearing process, it'll be very similar as far as the evaluation. Uh, but ultimately, the Board of Supervisors will make a determination on both the rezone as well as the subdivision plat. Why do I bring this up? Because um, when this goes to the Board of Supervisors and it's scheduled for December ninth. At their meeting beginning at four thirty PM, it'll also be on December sixteenth and December twenty-third. What happens is those three weeks are spent examining, of course, the full scope of the, the project. But the subdivision plat becomes an agenda item on the very final night, so the third night. So the supervisors would ultimately end up considering the entire proposal on December twenty-third. So that means on December ninth, sixteenth and twenty-third, there's a primary focus as the public hearings are geared toward the rezone, which in effect. Is, is the entire project. Now, the Board of Supervisors, according to the ordinance, uh, they'll receive the recommendation from this body. Uh, they'll review the final plat, the staff reports, report and recommendation from the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission to determine whether the plat conforms to the ordinances, the. General plan and the policies of the county. And uh, so yes, they look at the full picture, uh, the goals and objectives of the county general plan. And the Board of Supervisors may condition their approval to require agreements, providing use restrictions in order to preserve, improve. Uh, peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort and convenience of the future residents of the subdivision and neighboring properties. So. As was mentioned, uh, there is a potential uh, to look at conditions such as uh, what Mr. Skinner had mentioned as far as uh, some type of restriction. On the number of houses as far as the plating. Now, with that said, I could probably go on about this within the next agenda item. But I think this for purposes of me discussing it now, the rezone procedure, which is those three weeks. Um, that the Board of Supervisors uh, have to evaluate the plan. Uh, they have to look at each three weeks. They have what you call a reading of the ordinance where they look at it. They get the public input, collect as much information as possible. And potentially pass the reading of the ordinance and kind of move it to the next week. So it's sort of a, a series of um. Items as far as um, looking at the general proposal. Now. The um, Board of Supervisors at the um, let's see, the, they hold their three public hearings. And um, ultimately on the third meeting, on the twenty-third, um, they um, can look at uh. Uh, deferring consideration, rejecting the proposal or proceeding. To adopt ordinances by amendment. They do have a um. The ordinance reads a super majority required, sixty percent majority of the Board of Supervisors shall be required to. Adopt the uh, proposed amendments, uh. Uh, but they can also work with the developer and the property owner as if issues come up as far as looking at it. And that's why it's so essential uh, that uh, we look at everything that has been brought to the table uh, for consideration. Because we learn much of uh, much as we can as far as the, through this uh, public hearing uh, respective process. So. Whatever recommendation this commission comes up with tonight. It goes up into the Board of Supervisors for the ultimate consideration. So just want to make that uh, available.
Hearing that, what's our next step? Are you ready to make a motion? We have more questions? We have more? Conditions? We have?
I have a question. So can we add the easement offer to this or no? It's ultimately what happens is a uh, statement, a recommendation comes from this board. And if the zoning commission sees fit to recommend some type of restriction. Such as the house limit, it's well within the Board of Supervisors ability to include that. So that means if they have the ability to do that. You all as a commission have the ability to. Report that back to them as a finding that you had learned here tonight as a potential option. Because uh, ultimately, again, they're going to be engaging in the, the same thing. The only difference is. You're recommending something to them as a potential option. Now, again, this is one public hearing. And this is by code. This is by the, what the ordinance states. The board, this, this is a very serious matter by Iowa code and by the ordinance. There's a reason the commission collects as much information as possible from the public. But there's another reason why the supervisors have to do their due diligence on collecting the information through the three public hearing process. Because even though a recommendation comes out tonight, we continue to learn. We're always learners as far as gleaning as much information as possible. We try to be as rational as possible in terms, and I mean that in the technical sense of collecting data. Uh, having information available to make a worthy decision that fits with all of the, the different considerations. It's very um, intricate as far as weighing all the different options. I know we've talked tonight about zoning districts. We've talked about lots and all the zoning districts play functions. One of the top um, situ differences, uh, I know it was alluded to that AP and AE both share. Uh, various characteristics among each other as far as the agricultural community, but the, one of the top. But the, one of the top differences between A P and A E is the density control. Concept of how many houses within an area. And what, the way the Woodbury County zoning ordinance was designed, and again, this is well before my time, but I'm very aware of the debate that occurred back in two thousand and five with the previous comprehensive plan. But the idea was, do you use county regulations and county ordinances that grew out of the two thousand and five debate? There was a big discussion about whether we actually have a restrictive zoning layer for the Los Hills or not. We ended up without one, so we don't have that enumerated into the ordinance. And so the way the ordinance is designed with agricultural preservation and agricultural estates is it's a balance in terms of density control. The ordinance requires us to have a discussion in terms of moving from A P to A E based upon a density control. A E still has the ability to contain many of the requirements that A P has. And I do want to be clear that zoning districts are not necessarily have anything to do with assessment. That's a, that's a different aspect that can be very confusing at times out there on Beacon. Zoning districts are a mechanism for land use, specific to land use. We have the land use summary table in the respective Woodbury County zoning ordinance. And indeed, much of A P and A E are very similar with a few exceptions. I would challenge everybody to go look and compare those two columns. You will find a few things here or there. But there are farmers in the farming community that do have some land in the A E, but they continue to farm it the same way that they would in terms of the agricultural preservation. So when this county adopted the two thousand and eight ordinance, they did look at what had transpired in two thousand and five. We all know that density, housing density, urban sprawl, all of those big issues are a big part of zoning, land use regulation, et cetera. But there was a compromise that took place as far as between these two respective districts. And that is, how do you balance out these respective changes when things do happen, things do develop and transpire? How do you retain as much agricultural characteristics as possible, but yet allow housing? So what they did was they enumerated in there that your classic forty acre tract of land is the unit of analysis as far as control for the level of housing. Now, moving to get that third house meant that they put a trigger in there that you could come to the county and ask to rezone from A P to A E for the purpose really of that new lot coming in and that new house coming in for a density control mechanism. There were several things that transpired in two thousand and eight and I would have to refer back to our members that have, were around at that time and please feel free to correct me. But there were some adjustments where there were some restrictions on A E that were later backed off on. And that would have been like to the point that you couldn't have had a horse at one point being right next door. Because much of, if you look at Sioux City and all of our rural communities, the idea is, what do you put next to the city if you're immediately in rural, where you have more housing? The idea of A E was to kind of marry that. But the idea is if you do have multiple splits and multiple parcels within that forty, the ordinance has the strong suggestion that it's rezoned from A P to A E to facilitate the house. And the reason I say strong suggestion is, yes, indeed, you are, if you're not a farmer and you are not ag exempt on, under Iowa code, you do have to file building permits. Regardless if you're in A P or A E or S R or the other respective districts, you file building permits. Now, if you're in a forty acre tract that has multiple houses or two houses there, it's event, and they're sitting in A P, that means the next permit is going to trigger the entire rezone process. So our, I'm always kind of tempted to call, I don't want to call our ordinance writers founders. They're kind of in the middle somewhere between the red book. But in what I referred to red book is, it was our previous ordinance. We used to have districts, you're much more familiar than me, that were like R one and R two, and they were a different designation. So A P and A E technically came about as of two thousand and eight as a way to try to balance this idea of triggering the third house, triggering the fourth house, et cetera. So with that said, density is an issue that everybody cares about very much. It has effects on the neighborhood, effects on the road system, effects on all the services. And that's why we set it up to have a public conversation for these larger splits. In fact, going to the minor subdivision process and to the rezone, they're packaged together. It is, there are many times where we do run a rezone right next to and concurrently with a minor subdivision. It's this part of what the county process is in place. So regardless of the Los Hills or other areas, we have the A P and the A E as a mechanism. Yes, this area does have a beautiful area that is referenced as a conservation particular area. But we also don't have a zoning layer or a zoning restriction at the county level for the Los Hills. So that reverts back to the basic landowner rights as far as being able to split a property. As was alluded to, if you have a clean forty and you do do the first split, you can, you're eligible for the two houses. If you do the third split, that triggers a minor subdivision. And when it triggers a minor subdivision, it technically can trigger a rezone. And that's basically the method of operation I know that the county has been under since the two thousand and eight ordinances have been put into place. So with that said, again, the mechanism is here and the information, hopefully we continue to glean to help make informed decisions as far as recommendations over to the board. But ultimately, the zoning commission will need to put something together, whether it's approval, approval with conditions or rejection of the proposal. Regardless, that goes to the Board of Supervisors for evaluation.
And like I had stated before, I farm right on the east edge of Sioux City. I've seen a lot of change and development happen. Most of the time haven't really been on board with it because I knew how it would impact me down the road. People come out, build homes, and then they say they'd rather not have cattle next to them or they wouldn't want the dust blowing in their yards and the corn stocks and, but then they also don't want you to build homes on it. So I, I don't know exactly what to tell them other than it comes down to some of that has to do with property rights. And as a farmer that lives there and farms it, I'm A E, but I can still farm. I can still have cattle and do what I choose to within my allowed district. Everyone here has expressed valid points. They're, the one common thing is, is that they love to live there. They love that property right to have a house and live there. I don't get the impression that this is geared towards a high density development. It's going to maybe see a couple homes, three homes be put up there. And that is the two hundred and fifty acres that we're talking, probably that's not going to see other homes. I don't know if this is a good compromise or not. It's hard to say, yes, let's do this. The thirty-six acres or whatever that's involved, that would, in ag states, you can have a home on two acres. So that would guarantee that there would not be more than three homes on thirty-six acres. So, so that does show a willingness to demonstrate that they're trying to preserve the area to the extent that they can and make it work. I guess that's just, like I said, I've, I've gone through this. I've seen it. And it, it's hard to see the new home going up next to your property when you've been there forty years. And you walk that land and looked for calves and fixed fence and anyhow, I, I don't want to keep going on. But I understand and I sympathize on both sides of the fence. Property rights were one of the big issues that we talked about when the ordinance was written back in two thousand and eight. Because in two thousand and five, that overlay district took away a lot of property rights of farmers. Hundred and eighty sections of ground in Woodbury County couldn't have cattle on it if that district would have been left in there. So, so that was a restriction that would have protected the land, but it also took away a lot of property rights. So it's, I don't know, I guess you got to find the happy middle if there is one. Thanks.
And I, I sit on the Board of Supervisors and I'm, I don't have a vote here tonight, but I wanted to be here to listen to both sides. And my parents are farmers. They had about a thousand acres of farmland. And, you know, we had to remove hunters off of our farm, even though we hunted. We had tractors that were shot up. And, but I know that hunting with a bow, you're probably shooting maybe thirty to forty yards. Muzzle loader, maybe a hundred yards. But, you know, a lot of people that shot at our farms or shot at our tractors probably had scopes and were quite a ways away. Unfortunately, those things happen. But, you know, I can see both sides here and just, I'm here to listen to both sides. So just want to let you know that.
It's kind of a balancing act between property rights and conservation. And being, I mean, we're being good stewards, I think, no matter what, honestly, because there is compromise here.
Yeah, I, I see, I see compromise. I see stewardship. I would be watching closely myself because I don't live that far from there as well. I live down on the bottom. I moved thirty-one years ago, bought ten acre acreage there. And just a matter of a few years later, there was a home built right across gravel road from me. It was the daughter of the landowner. It was the only place on that piece of farm ground that they could build a home because of the water. I didn't have any input in that. I have to accept that. And it's all good. That's just how life goes sometimes. But we do what we can to try and do the best for, for everybody and make sure that the, the development of this county is done as intelligently and with as much care for the land and also looking out for the landowner's rights at the same time. Because all of you in here, to some degree or another, are landowners. So it's, it's a tough one, but I, I, I like the idea of the, the compromise on the easement. Personally, I think that's adding a sense of of ownership in the whole discussion about preserving. And Brent appears to me like, you know, he has no desire to build sixty homes there. You can't hunt deer like that. And I obviously got to get up there and spend some time up in the neck of the woods and, and, and see it more closely than I have. But I think there's compromise here and I think there is a path forward. And I guess I'll, I'll move to approve this with that three home easement from where I stand. And you'll have to tell me how you want that worded, Dan.
Well, I think we got to clarify the term easement versus.
Whatever the restriction, yeah.
Presentative of restriction, like, I know we're used to restrictive covenances or things that are associated with the lots. But a condition like that could be worked with the landowner developer as far as how they. And, because ultimately, the supervisors, if they would so choose to go that route, they put a condition on them and expect them to prepare that in a suitable manner that would actually implement that so that is legal force as far as on the lots. So that houses could only go on the designated lots or restricted off of the one that they don't want it on. So I would probably gear towards using the terminology restriction. Usually an easement more so.
Yeah.
They both kind of can have that effect, but I think we just got to kind of refer to both of them in a sense or restrict.
Okay, so we have a motion.
If you'd want to modify that, I would.
Yeah, I guess.
The way Dan said it.
I'd move, I'd, I'd move to approve this with the three house restriction, however it needs to be worded properly.
Yeah, and for clarity, this is for the subdivision. So this is approval of the two hundred and, two hundred and fifty second overlook.
Correct. That's what it would be. Two fifty second overlook, yes.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. And one abstention.
Okay, so we're four, four to zero if that's the, okay.
Okay.
Next agenda.
Next agenda item. Next agenda item is a public hearing. Consideration of Proposed Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, which is a rezone application from the Agricultural Preservation A P zoning district to the Agricultural Estates A E zoning district, parcel number eight, seven, four, six, two, four, two, zero, 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 one, one. From Doug Skinner of Skinner Holdings LLC. Dan, do you want to read that information into the record, please?
Yes, as far as, again, this is a continuation from the last agenda item. This is specific to the zoning ordinance map amendment, requesting the rezone for this thirty-six point five acre parcel from the agricultural preservation to the agricultural estates. Again, this being under the realm of the same project, we are going within a public hearing. And I do have a, a document that I would like to ask to be received in the record to be our alternative for the rezone. We, we do put in our packets that our language is subject to changes throughout the public hearings and readings process at the supervisor level. And basically, under item one, I want to point out that in the fourth paragraph, this is a thirty-six point five acre property. And I would ask that this be received into the record and be the item that is considered for the, the language that we would use to ultimately, if it's so approved, the one that's used by the supervisors. So I'd ask that this be received.
A motion to receive.
Do you need specifics on it or just a motion to receive?
To receive it and have it be the official one considered for the rezone.
Motion to receive to be the official document in this proceeding.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Hey, all opposed, same sign. There you go.
Okay, and so under the, this respective agenda item, I do want to acknowledge again that it's the same project, but it is within the rezone. And the public comments that were received as a whole pretty much consisted of both projects kind of built together. So I just, just want the record to reflect that there's redundancy between both applications, but they're both trying to achieve the same respective project. And with that said, you could definitely move to the applicants and proceed with the public hearing.
Applicants, do you have anything you want to add to the record on this item? I'm hearing none. Discussing, okay.
Is that a good time? I just want to confirm again, the restriction, I kind of like that word better anyway, obviously is in play for this portion of the hearing as well.
Yeah, by ordinance, we have to deal with these as separate items, but I, I think that it comes up in both debates. So ultimately, they can basically re-reference it as part of this recommendation as a whole. But you're looking at two things to achieve the goal. They're both parts of it. And the commission can put the expectation on, you know, both sides to see that that gets done basically and compel, convey that over to the Board of Supervisors. Because they'll, they'll have a letter that considers everything that came out of the meeting. And they would put that, if the, if they recommend that over to them, the Board of Supervisors could. And, uh, they would put that, if the, if they recommend that over to them, the board of supervisors, uh, could consider it and implement it or not. If they do implement it, then, uh, the expectation would likely be put on you as landowner to, uh, uh, put that language together. Uh, similar to how we do with restrictive covenances and when folks, um, put their own lots, uh, put their lots in at there's times when pavement agreements have played a role where they put that restriction on as well. And, uh, so, um, that can be part of both of these proposals here, both agenda items.
I just want to reaffirm that that's still on the table. We're good with that.
And, and Dan, I guess to clarify, the, um, subdivision would have the restriction. The, the property would still be, if this were to go forward, rezoned as AE, it, it really wouldn't be a a condition within the rezoning. It would just be a condition within the subdivision.
It'd be part of the plating. So what happens and for the, for the good of the public, what happens is when the board of supervisors, uh, consider this, this information's brought before them, it's presented in their backup materials. If they so agree to put a restriction on, what happens is the final plat, the plat document is held until they prepare the written instrument. And that would be expected to be recorded concurrently with the plat. So, so your, your big plat document that you worked with the surveyor on, that would be held by the office until you present the official restriction where most go to their attorney to have the attorney write it up and prepare it specific to the lots and, in the, in the legal requirement. That's how we would, that's how we would explain it to you as far as going through this process that it'd be, the, the burden would be on you to have that document prepared.
Are we going to have an opportunity? Because obviously we went from four to three, when we presented four, we went to three to replat that? Or did we, we just approved or we just recommended the plat?
The, that's, that kind of thing can be renegotiated with the supervisors at the supervisor level at time, uh, under your consent and agreement with each other, but technically doing that in a lot of ways resets the process. It could reset the process. So we, we would have to keep that in mind.
Okay.
If it's, if it, if you have too much variance, uh, uh, natural changing lot lines, that's a, that's a big thing.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody public?
Glenn Tevis, um, twenty-five, thirty-nine county road D twenty-five, old highway one forty-one. Just a point of clarification. If the, um, previous application is approved, what practical difference is there for the AP versus the AE designation?
The, again, the, the zoning layer itself, um, it is a density, uh, layer as far as between AP and AE. They establish that as the compromise of retaining agricultural rights for property owners, but allowing for some of these acreages to take place and be built out in the county while we're still retaining, uh, the agriculture. So that was the goal in two thousand and eight is to have some middle ground to be able to transition, but the AP does hold true to the two. But the, the nuances that we experience in the county, and this gets very confusing, is agricultural exemption. And that's where you have the famous, they got to do that. Why? And then we have to explain it because there is a different designation for farmers under Iowa law. Under Iowa law, farming is under, but you can hold ground that is in farming AP and not be a farmer, not file a schedule F. And that, those level of rights do not belong to you, even though you're on AP. You're just a regular, I don't want to use that word, but you're a citizen that's not a farmer. And that reverts back to the zoning ordinance and yes, building permits are required for AP if you're not a chartered farmer. Typically, the far, the indicating of farming under Iowa code is the cultivation of crop and animals. And typically another indicator is filing schedule Fs directly with the IRS, uh, and the department of revenue. But if you're not in the farming status, the zoning ordinance applies to everybody, like everybody. So AP and AE are the, um, zoning districts for controlling density.
So if this, you know, is passed with the restriction as suggested, is there really a difference then between the two?
The, I think one thing you're alluding to is, is the uses within AP versus AE. Is that what you're, there are some, there are some differences. Um, actually AP probably holds some more commercial uses that won't be allowed in AE. Uh, so some, some of that, uh, like Dan said, density is the biggest change. But there are some uses that are allowed in AP that aren't allowed in AE and those, um, um, are available online. Or do you, you've read through those?
Yeah, and if I may, for the good of the public, um, I'll show you, if you go to the Woodbury County website, which is up on the screen here, and you go to departments and you go to, you find, it's long, but it's community economic development, planning and zoning. You go to that button. And too many steps, but you look for where it says ordinances. And our zoning ordinance is this first button here. And what happens is this is a large PDF document, about a hundred and fifteen pages. And this right here is the county's land use summary table. We actually have a list of uses that are enumerated on either being allowed by right, meaning principal allowed. So if you see an okay in the column, that means that can go happen without restriction. Um, if it's C conditional use, you have to see the zoning commission and the board of adjustment for that use. If it's an accessory use, it means you've got to have a principal use on the property such as a house. So you have to have a house to build a shed. Um, and, uh, we have some temporary uses and that temporary use is just in there for really one thing right now, and that's rag bri. If somebody wants to sell some stuff off the side of the road, uh, and, um, the, uh, prohibited use. So if you go down the line here, you'll see these two columns here, compare AP to AE. Now we go down the line here, this is all agriculture. You'll notice they reflect each other exactly. You go down to residential uses and remember now AE is the second column as that disappears. Um, they go not more than two, uh, per quarter, quarter section. Um, it's okay there. But then single family dwelling up here is okay in AE. That be, that, that's, that's not the cleanest way to say it, but that's where the, the trigger kind of turns on within that, uh, there. Um, we do have one accessory dwelling. Iowa law has just changed where there's a square footage requirement now where, um, you can have an accessory dwelling, the, uh, on the same lot, but it has to be held to a certain square footage and it's, it's very restrictive. Um, so we go down through here and as Tom said, there will be things here and there that are a few differences between AE and AP, but I'm, I'm going to kind of go down here. Many of the, the dash lines being restrictive. You can do animal grooming in AP, but you can't AE. And you go down, commercial kennels, conditional use there, all this stuff restricted. You can have a pet cemetery on AP, but you can't AE. So they want to keep cemeteries away from housing. Um, we go down through, uh, conditional use for veterinarian offices. You see archery range is okay there, but prohibited in AE. Um, and this is commercial activity, of course. But it just kind of
Sure.
involves targeting the use that you're looking at and seeing how they relate. But typically they kind of shadow each other, uh, for the most part between the two. And that's why we often say, with the exception of few things, it's mostly about the housing density. Cause that's the thing that I think, uh, raises the most concerns about bringing more population to an area. Um, so.
Just kind of to help add a little clarity, um, I think, uh, Tom made a good point. I didn't even study that as much as that. Actually, there probably is some more restrictions potentially. That was more than I realized. Looking at that list, when you go to AE that you can no longer do in your AP. But I think the best thing we were trying to offer was, hey, I don't have an intention to do this. I understand that you're saying if I get hit by a truck or if I just decide to sell it in five, 10, 20, 50 years, whatever, my kids inherit it. We're just saying like, hey, by doing this, we're trying to compromise. No one ever could build more than three additional homes at most, which would really be basically within the rights of the, of really the restrictiveness of an AP anyways, if, if I'm not incorrect.
The way the map.
The way the map lays out, there could be three homes sitting on that same area.
Right, I'm saying like, that's why we offered it.
You could still have three homes on those.
Right, yeah, that's why we offered is we're not, we're trying to do this in a way to answer their questions of like, what happens if someone, you know, this is the camel underneath the tent. It's like, well, this would stop the camel underneath the tent. Um, so to speak. And you, you know, you wouldn't ever, even if it was someone after me, wouldn't be able to do more than what you guys previously voted on.
Quick question while you're there.
Yeah.
So with the proposed restriction, the three homes, is that in the plans? Then the works right now?
There's no homes right now.
That's, that's what I want to make sure it clear. Everybody's, everybody's clear that there are no homes being planned.
Yeah, no, I, there's, there's nothing. There's no plans.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure.
I'm just, I think what we're planning for is by saying, hey, no more than three homes could be built. Additional homes could be built, even if some second, third owner from now or whoever. Yeah, I, I think it's a, a great compromise and, and yes, there, there is nothing in the plans at all. So you're not going to see someone putting a home up in, in March.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Few questions. Jason Yaki, I live on, uh, two hundred and fortieth street. I guess I'm kind of confused by the order of which you're doing this. Don't you have to rezone it to AE to even think about subdividing it?
Technically, you can, it's been done before where there's been a subdivision and then you lay out the lots. And we've had situations in the past, because I previously looked with the previous zoning administrator where they decided, well, we'll put the lots in, but we're not going to rezone it at this point. Uh, a lot of it had to do with farm ground conversion, but the ordinance states, somebody comes in for a building permit. We identify the number of houses there, then you have to come in and rezone. It's sort of kind of kicking the can down the road or waiting later to do that. It can, uh, it can appear that way. And we've run into this several times where you're talking about the big scope of the project. One agenda item is real heavy on the details and the next one, all that information kind of elapses. But yes, there has been the situation where that's been delayed before, but the, the next action will trigger, you will get to a point where a rezone is triggered when it's, when it's identified.
So you could, you could allow the, whatever, the subdivision. Whatever, approve that, but then say you can't rezone it and they can't build anyway?
You would, it has to be evaluated based on where the lot is as well as
On one thirty acre plot, right?
Thirty-six acres, whatever it is.
Yeah, whatever the acres are, which is under the forty, which means you have to subdivide it to build the two, the extra houses. But if you don't rezone it, you can't build the extra houses.
Different forties. So basically.
Oh, it's on.
So, yeah, that's the whole point. So basically under AP, you could do.
You could build here, there.
No, you could build two on each forty.
Yeah, I understand.
Right now. So I'm just saying like, it doesn't all sit on one.
I know, but then again, the compromise, uh, deal.
What he pointed out too.
When you first got up here, the thing he said, well, I don't, I don't, the fourth lot, you can't build anything on anyway. So they want three houses. So to me, that's not much of a compromise unless you're talking about all of the forty acres, three houses. If you're only talking about this thirty acre deal, three houses is all they intended to do anyway. So what's the compromise?
The compromise, I think, would come from the fact if this
I know, but that's another subdivision. That's a completely different comeback to a different.
If, if this was rezoned to AE, AE allows for a house per two acres.
I know, but they still have to come back and resubdivide at that point. You'd go through another step.
Right, but, but his, his
Not a reset, sorry, Tim.
His, his restriction will never allow him to do that.
But you'd still have to come back in front of the board to try and do this again to get them into smaller pieces.
Just a subdivision, not for a rezone then.
No, no, but it would be another hearing, another subdivision about more.
Right, and, and with what he's proposed, proposing, that would eliminate that from ever even happening down the road.
Uh, yeah, I understand.
That's, that's, I guess.
If you're already in eight, eight acre plot or whatever it is, most people aren't going to want to split that off anyway. So that's, to me, it's not much of a compromise, if any. Thanks.
Have a question. Say it gets rezoned, we go through the whole process and
Cindy?
Yes, Cindy, I'm sorry, Cindy.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep. And they eventually would build three houses on there and there's already an existing house. With those three additional houses and the existing house have to be single family houses? Or can they put like a condo or the existing house, Doc Sorenson's house, it's there? Can they turn that into a hunting lodge? You know, is there going to be any kind of a restriction that these will be single family houses?
It would have to follow, again, those are the type of questions. We got to go run it up against the ordinance. And, um, running up against the ordinance, we can look at the table here. And for your, your single fam, your basic single family dwelling, it's designed one lot, one house. With the exception of the legislature allowing the, uh, um, single family dwelling, uh, or excuse me, the accessory dwelling to the house. And this was, this was a state law that took it out of the county's hands to restrict accessory houses. But you see in the table here, and again, this column is the AE. Um, we've got restrictions on two family dwellings, three family dwellings, uh, uh, multiple family dwelling. Uh, those are much more geared toward more of our city lots, which are suburban residential, where there's much more expectation of density in an area. And so the suburban residential zoning district is a ten thousand square foot lot where there's an expectation of, uh, more density. So that's where you have more of a family home kind of scenario. And, uh, going up here to, again, yeah, two family and then even a, a three family or when you get up to, to the apartment concept or higher, a conditional use permit where that actually has to come before the zoning commission on merit of that, as well as the board of adjustment. So, uh, there's, there's different valves and that would be over in the suburban residential district, not the agricultural estates district.
Did you, she mentioned hunting lodge or whatever, uh, is that listed lower?
Um, I, again, it may not be perfectly enumerated, but you've got like banquet and reception halls and these entertainment hospitality type of things are actually prohibited quite a bit.
Right, and under, under conditional use, you've got the archery range and firing range are eliminated. Um, the paintball range, um, I don't see hunting, but, but like Dan said, it, it's a single family home is all that would be allowed on the ag estates, single fa, family dwelling. Which I don't see hunting lodge there.
Hunting hasn't been like the art of hunting itself, um, it wasn't ever put in, uh, two thousand.
Some of, some of the issues that are allowed in the AP, like I was saying, are some of the commercial, like a, a gravel pit or a, a borrow pit or well, not borrow pit, but, um, uh, temporary, um, cement plant, things like that, that, that can't go in if it becomes ag estates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Rich Pope. I live in Sloan, four fifteen Beale Street. And I have a comment and then a question. And the first comment is I want to praise you guys for living in one of the seven counties that has a very unique situation. And it's where these kind of issues collide together pretty strongly that I have strong interest in. And it's the seven less hills counties. There are other counties that have other, their own issues here, but these are really sizable issues because we have a population that's growing, especially in Woodbury and Potawatomi counties. And we are working against a very fragile environment along the front range of the less hills, and I want to protect those very much. When I first heard about this proposal, I'm sitting here thinking about, well, we're going to be increasing population density within a small area in increasing population density within a small area in a very, very critical part of this. Uh, I've gotten some answers in my head now, I've, I've gotten cleared out a little bit about that too. So I, I salute you and how you're approaching this, because it is a tough, tough set of questions we have to face. But I would just message there, as you go forward, I think we've got some decisions that are going on here for the planning and zoning commission. But as you go forward, keep that in mind, you know, that these areas, once they're lost, they're lost. And I know I drive into council bluffs and I drive into some parts of Sioux City and around there. And we've got some areas that have been really kind of devastating. And a lot of people will say, well, there's plenty more out there. And there really isn't when you look at it. We're, we've got a special, unique uh situation here. Brad, I'd like to challenge you a little bit here uh to floral identification, if you want. I think I could probably get you, I've got four state records, but as it goes. Now, now my question. There you go, see? All in good nature. Um, and my, my other question is, and it kind of goes to what Glenna was talking about here too, that the change from AP to AE, we've seen the matrix up here that that's very useful. And I, I'll admit, I did not look at the matrix before we got here. I don't think many people did really. But the change on this particular situation here, what would be the advantage of changing it from AP to AE on this particular 35, 36 acre tract? And that's my question to you guys.
Yep. When you, um, when we go through the multiple calculation of lots, uh, section, uh, it was referred to in the report. Uh, we do switch over to AP or excuse me, AE uh, for the development of these residential lots. Uh, and I'll pull up the code section here. Um, so in agricultural preservation zoning district, section 3.01, this kind of describes what the role of the agricultural preservation zoning district is. And agricultural zoning district, uh, when we've done the multiple lot, we traditionally run it concurrently with the minor subdivision procedure. What happens between AP and AE, something that hasn't been said as well as the setbacks, the building setbacks can change too. Uh, as far as right now, it's 100 feet from front right of way line under AP. Uh, with the idea of housing, more housing going into an area, the setbacks are relaxed a little bit too. So it goes down to 75 as far as placement. Now, when you have lots that are um, placed within X amount of lots, we got a lot of things that we have to consider when we create them. That uh, the county decided that the average two acre lot is kind of the, the most suitable to have enough room for assets and resources. Uh, you have to have typically 200 foot frontage uh, to fit in there. And so when they design these uh, 200 foot frontage lots with 75 foot, we need to see that there's enough room for assets to go on the property. We're all probably familiar with the wells and the septics and the, the county lifestyle that is different out there. And so this is actually enumerated into the ordinance where we do follow this uh, part B here. Agri- and I'll just go ahead and read it. Agricultural preservation zoning district allows agricultural uses and limited single family dwelling uses, hence the two houses per quarter, which are described more definitely in the land use uh summary table, the matrix that I had up before you. Not more than two residences shall be allowed on any quarter quarter nominally 40 acre track. If a property owner wishes to subdivide to create more than two parcels on a quarter quarter section concurrently with the plating process, the zoning designation should be changed from AP to A uh, to, it actually says appropriate zoning district. And the most appropriate one is actually AE versus SR. SR would be much more concerning as far as the smaller lots. So it's been our practice, anytime that we've had splits that uh um, create multiple lots within the same subdivision plat to include it into the agricultural estate. So there is a long record of uh multi lots going this route. Because the word said should is there, should versus shall. Um, uh, that would offer flexibility if there was a situation as with the, uh, can't remember the name of the plat, but a, a farmer, for example. A farmer goes and splits some lots in, but they, the farmer has no interest in moving over the zoning district. It will, it's also important to point out that, again, if you're not a farmer, building permits are required. Uh, if you are a farmer and you use your home or the homes on the property specifically for agricultural purposes, and it has to be agricultural purposes, meaning you're probably doing the books or something in your ho- home, you have a home office, then uh, a house could, in a sense, be agriculturally exempt. And so we have to balance these ordinances out between the farm community and the non-farm community. And uh, there's too many nuances, definitely. And and that's where it gets confusing. And I think another thing that hurts our debate across the board is we do use the word subdivision for the most basic to the most complicated intricate project, where we've had one lot subdivisions that we get, you know, a level of phone calls because of the nature of changing it. And so I, I find that to be the, one of the most challenging things is to balance out the rights of the farming community. The county does not bestow those rights, it comes directly from state law, state code. And uh, one of the challenges, well, I'm going to start storytelling, but one of the challenges we ran into is the governor signed legislation 2020 that took away the county's ability to uh, um, require a building permit. We used to have to require a building permit, but we wouldn't charge a fee. But now um, we can't require the building permit if it's directly for agricultural purposes. So I, I, it's an interesting subject, I could really get into that.
Okay, any other comments from the public?
AP versus AE, so four things to consider. First of all, your comprehensive study in 2040 said, we want to keep sparse areas sparse. That's what Woodbury County wanted, and that was the direction the zoning board was going to take. And it was approved by the supervisors. Secondly, Woodbury County soil and conservation people said, keep this AP. Third, you've got the dairy thing. The idea of putting houses closer to a dairy doesn't make sense when that has been a major complaint at all levels of the government from, in Woodbury County. Fourth, I think you're going to create a problem for your Woodbury County engineer secondary roads. Because those of us who drive that road will tell you, you put a couple of houses up there and people who don't have the vehicles and the equipment, the farm type stuff to get up and down that road, I guarantee you, they're going to be calling Woodbury County engineer and saying, get somebody on her and fix this thing.
Thank you.
I, I have a question regarding the dairy. The people in Luton live within, what, less than two miles of that dairy, Sioux Dairy. And I'm trying to figure out the dairy that you guys have been referencing regards to this location. Cause I live southwest of the dairy, maybe three miles. And I don't know, I'm still kind of confused about the, I don't want to make an issue out of the dairy, but I'm, I'm kind of lost on how the proximity of the dairy to this particular location seems it's a little further than that.
It's two miles, right south of me. Dairy's literally across the range. Um, Doug Farms.
We need you to come up to the microphone again, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm directly two miles south from it, there's a valley between me and the, there was a road from Deer Run Trail, there's a gravel road that goes from Deer Run Trail to Old 141. Okay, um, it's known as Little Egypt, there's a Y there, it's famous in Woodbury County. I live on Franklin Avenue, which is on one side of the Y. I often go into Sioux City, will take that road and drive right by that place. If you're going to have a house up there, your closest blacktop access is Old 141. You're going to go about two to three miles out of your way to come off of Deer Run Trail to go to this property. So the road that everybody's going to take predominantly is going to take, it is curvy, it is hilly, because of the soil compositions, difficult to maintain. Those of us who drive it know, for instance, for me, it adds about two miles of gravel. So for me personally, um, I don't do it in the spring, I don't do it in the fall, I don't do it when it's raining. Um, uh, and I have an all wheel drive vehicle. And I'm telling you, you know, we, we don't complain about it because we live in the country, we're used to it, you know? Um, so it's just part of it for us. And most of us have vehicles that, that can make it. But um, I'm telling you, you know, go out, go out and drive the road after it rains. You know, uh, it's a, it's, it's an experience.
You. Any more public comment? Are we ready to close public hearing? So I need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding.
Motion, could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay. Are you ready for more discussion or are you ready for a motion?
I guess I'd like to make one comment. This is a hard thing to, to do. Um, I just hope that everybody here, no matter what happens, keeps some dialogue open too, because I've avoided most of the problems that I could have had by doing that. You don't all, you don't avoid them all. My gut feeling is the fact that I think they're trying to do something beneficial for the area, not detrimental. The ability for somebody else to do something that would be worse is there already as an AP setting? And I could be wrong. Thanks.
One, just one last thing. Um, if anybody would like to go out and view this, I'd be willing to go out and take a look at this area. Uh, perhaps I could talk to a couple of the supervisors, maybe we can go out and take a look at that area and um, see, you know, what the concerns are, so. And the vote's coming up quickly, so it would have to be within maybe the next week, week and a half. Um, I'm off on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, so.
To that point, remember, the supervisors can s- say no. They can say yes, so.
Motion.
And go ahead and make the motion to recommend the supervisors, uh, the rezoning of the uh, 36.5 acres using the draft provided.
Yeah. The, the updated draft.
The updated, the updated draft received tonight.
Is that good enough for you?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, it's uh, it's the will and pleasure of the commission as far as the recommendation. You, you could reference the.
With, with the restriction. Apply it also.
The restriction.
The restriction for the, from the previous um, plat.
Yeah, could you restate which ones?
Um, that was uh, the minimum or maximum of three properties or three homes.
Restriction of the three house.
Houses be applied. The additional.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the provided document that we accepted tonight with the restriction of the three homes, the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. And another extension.
Order zero of abstain.
Okay, okay, which leaves us on the next item on the agenda was public comment on matters not on the agenda. We haven't had any bans, only have we?
Uh, we did and then felt left.
Okay. Okay, and not seeing any. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number seven, staff update.
Okay, well, the um, zoning commission and board of adjustment, um, the application process is of course open uh, and the deadline's ending December 1st. Uh, as far as new applications coming in for appointments for next year. I do want to point out that uh, state law was passed, it took effect in July about new commission members and new board of adjustment members uh, joining that have to go through some training, it's about an hour and a half or so training that talks about things such as ex parte and uh, the various components of engaging the public. Uh, as far as I read into it, the existing members are grandfathered in the sense that they've had experience already on the board. And so that would not apply until somebody else joins it, the way that they wrote that legislation. I'm going to be looking at it very carefully and see if I can put it together as an instructor, because I, I can put courses together. And if I could find a way to be compliant with that, I'd like to set up a built-in system that we could have that, just kind of so we're compliant every year and build in. That does apply to the board of supervisors as well, uh, that respective training. So if some new member gets elected for a new term, then they would be applied, would have to apply for that. But existing ones that uh, took office before July of this year would be in the same boat as, as the existing members. I just want to bring that up because it's going to change some culture in a sense of uh, how the zoning commission operate and how the board of adjustment operates. But I do think that by the state uh, grandfathering it, they acknowledge the experience that uh, many board members that have had some ten- tenure on it uh, would recognize some of those issues, but it, it doesn't hurt that we kind of sharpen up a little bit at times. And I, and I'm trying to look into a way that we can kind of complement the process. If they won't let me complement the process, we might have to look at some other type of mechanism.
Sure, okay.
Um, it's Chris's seat for zoning commission and Pam Clark on the board of adjustment. It's all on that. Um, again, the board of supervisors will take up the applications that were spoke of tonight on the uh, I believe the ninth, 16th and 23rd. Uh, the Rosambling one will be sooner because there's no rezone associated with that. But um, uh, overall, um, that's all I can think of now. And like, if I forget anything, I will uh, contact you via email.
Sounds good. All right, item number eight, commissioner, comment or inquiry, do we have any? Nobody, nobody, everybody shaking their head, we're going to move on to the next one, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. I'll second.
Who seconded? Okay, all in favor say aye. We are adjourned officially.
I will stop the.